Thank you very much for joining us. We'll reconvene the city council meeting for April 7, 2015. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand. I've asked Councilwoman Raddi to lead our pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, open your heart and recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll move on to confirmation of agenda. Any changes by staff?
Madam Mayor, we have one item, and that is Agenda Item C6. We would like to move that to Business 5, so we can give you an update as to how the bids came in.
Okay. Any changes by council members?
I don't need to make a business, I can just look at the card.
With that, we'll move on to announcements, presentations, and written communications. We do have one presentation this afternoon, and that's the proclamation to One Legacy in honor of April as the National Donate Life California Month. So if I could please ask Miles and Sylvia Kay to join me at the podium. One Legacy is a public agency that garners referrals from hospitals, physicians, and other agencies for donated organs, blood, blood tissues, et cetera, to save the lives of those in need. And then the nationwide, we've got about 123,000 donated individuals who have agreed to donate to their 123,000 waiting to receive a donation of some organ tissue, et cetera. Okay. And more than 21,000 individuals in California, same thing, on the waiting list. So how do you become an organ donor? On DMV, when you register your license and renew your license, there is a checkbox that you can check "yes," and that allows you to be that compassionate individual that could offer, in that time of need, a family who's on that waiting list. And so, on behalf of the City of La Quinta, we have honored the request to proclaim April 2015 as the California Donate Life Month. And we have a proclamation as such, on behalf of myself and the city council. If you want to share a little bit about your Run Walk, because that's your awareness campaign, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead and share with them part of your awareness campaign and the event coming up.
All right. Well, the Run Walk is done in Cal State Fullerton, and it's an annual event. It was started by a woman whose husband was a recipient, who needed a donation. And we invite anybody to come, and we invite the mayor or anybody in the council to come. It's a very big event promoting organ donation. It's the biggest one in the state of California.
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to talk for a minute if I may. Okay. Two things I'd like to say. First is, Honorable Mayor Evans, I thank you and the council for this proclamation, because the word needs to be put out. As you heard today, 123,000 and 21,000 are in California. That's almost one in five in the country. So the need is very, very great. And there's a lot of misconceptions in all about organ donation. So if I could take a minute just to read a few. Donation is considered only when all possible effects, efforts to save a life have been made and the person has passed away. You may be a suitable donor, even if you are a senior, like Sylvia and myself, suffer from diabetes, or high blood pressure, or cancer, you still can be a donor. Don't rule yourself out. The donor family and state does not pay anything to be a donor. The main religions in the world, of the world, support donation as an act of love and kindness toward a fellow human being. Recovery of organs and tissues performed by care, respect, and dignity at a funeral that can be without a disfigured person and an open chest. I might like to tell you a little bit about Sylvia and myself, but first, I want to leave you with a thought that I picked out of here. The donation of organ and tissue is one of the most beautiful legacies a human being can leave behind. In 1972, Sylvia, my wife, was diagnosed with a fatal disease. Eventually, in 2001, she needed a liver transplant, and she received one in 2009. And then, due to medication, taking medication to prevent a rejection, she needed a kidney, and she received a kidney in 2009. Now, she's proved that organ donation works, so we need everybody to be an organ donor. I have some cards, if anybody would like it, but each one of the council members has a little package that we brought with us. And in it is a card that says, "Be a donor, you can be a donor," and to pass it on. So if you are a donor, pass it on. If not, are you a donor? And I'm going to leave a few cards here, in case anybody wants to pick one up. Please feel free. And we thank you, the community, and we thank you again for this proclamation.
I do want to say that single individuals' donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others. And a single blood donation can help three people in need. So we are very blood donor friendly in this community. We need to enhance that, to include the organs as well.
And one last thing, since you read all that, is that corneous do not get affected by blood, so that corneous can be given by anybody, almost anybody. So doesn't this look like the good donation?
All three hospitals here in the valley, I know we've made 25 referrals a year, all the hospitals in the Coachella Valley are contracted with One Legacy as their agency of choice for organ donation. So, again, this is DMV Donate Life California Month.
And this will be taken to the Run Donate Life Run Walk.
And you have two alumni from Cal State Fullerton. Councilmember Penny and I are both Titan alumni.
Okay.
So give them our best while you're there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move back to the public comment, matters that are not on the agenda. And we do have a few requests to speak. And we'll go ahead and start with Kay Wolf. Kay, if you'd come up, please, to the podium. And as you're called to the podium, please provide your name and address for the record. And we've got about a three-minute or so. You know who's real, Kay. Great to see you.
Kay Wolf, 77227 KIIN Sanada. And before our bionic woman and her husband leave, I would like to remind everybody that you don't have to be dead to donate. You don't even have to be young, and I guess you have to be pretty healthy. But when I was only 71 years old, I donated a kidney to a stranger, and it was as easy as pie. It was like, it was less than a root canal. Sorry for the dentists here, but anyway, I would like to encourage people who feel healthy and feel like they would like to contribute in their lifetime. It's easy to donate, harder to donate a liver, but it's easy to donate a kidney. And like many of you, I've got all my organs, and no matter how rotten I am when I die, they say we can use something, so.
Right.
But I'd really like to talk to you about water, which is on our minds this week in particular. And I think it would be wonderful if the city council would take the leadership in our community and develop some sort of a policy to guide staff and commissions on what sorts of projects are now appropriate in our city. Lakes, fountains, houses without gray water recycling. It seems like that there are a whole lot of things that we could do, and to advise staff as soon as possible, that we will look askance at developments with lakes and rivers and whatever that are going to deplete our water supply further. I remember years ago, I went to CBWD and asked them if they didn't have some guidelines to give to cities, communities, on how to restrict developments, and kinds of developments, to save water. And they said, "No, no, that's up to the municipalities." So then I went to our municipality, and I said, "What are we doing to guide people to conserve water?" They said, "Oh, that's up to CBWD." So I think it's time to start pointing the finger in the other direction, and hopefully, if you're going to establish a financial advisory committee, maybe we need a water advisory committee and help do some public education on what we can all do as individuals and what we can do as far as developments and large projects are concerned. And I would hate to see that beautiful Civic Center campus park grass go away, but if it's got to go, it's got to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Just as a follow-up to that, since the governor's new mandate, Frank and I have had preliminary discussions, and he's already communicated with the directors, they are pulling together in their various areas of responsibility, different policy suggestions and proposals that will be presented in a package in the not-too-distant future. So definitely, we want to have it comprehensive and cover all the bases, so we will be sharing that in the not-too-distant future, I guess.
Madam Mayor, too, I might remind the audience, too, that recently, just a few months ago, we had a number of community people get together at the museum. That was one of our topics of discussion, water conservation and how we approach that.
And also, our planning commission has mandated with the developers, for at least the last five years, maybe eight years now, that the developers have a desert scape option for all new homes, so they can have a desert scape and save that water.
Right. We've taken steps over the years, and it's now a matter of stepping that up a notch and looking at how we can further enhance the need to conserve water. So definitely. Thank you. Okay, our next request to speak, actually, there were several, and they have donated their time to Mr. Joseph Dolan.
That's correct.
Come on up, Joseph. You've got about four or five, four other ones in addition to yourself, so.
And I'd like to, I'm just going to kind of keep track of my time here, so that I don't, that I don't go over. And I probably, in all honesty, I probably won't use all 15 minutes, but just to kind of make sure that things move along, we'll do that. Okay, so first of all, Mayor, I'd like to thank you and your staff for answering and responding to my concerns about what was taking place at the La Quinta Park. I do appreciate that. I had many people contact me via email, and I received a couple of phone calls. I actually had an opportunity to meet with Chris Escovedo, I believe his last name is.
Escovedo, yes.
He was very professional. He listened to what I had to say, and, you know, I had hoped that it was a good meeting, a productive meeting. My primary objective here today is to make sure that no one gets shot down at that park and killed. And unfortunately, what I perceive is, and I'm not, I don't want you to misunderstand me, I'm not here defending or attacking anybody. I'm here about a situation, a very tense situation. And I feel that the likelihood is that the person that will be shot will be some six-year-old that's playing on a jungle gym that has absolutely nothing to do with what's going on in that park right now. That is my biggest fear, and that's why I'm here today. Okay? So again, I would like to thank you for all of the, all the responses that I've gotten from your staff. However, unfortunately, the attack on the La Quinta Park is still underway, and it has subsided somewhat, but there is still quite an attack on that park. And I'm going to use the word tyranny, because the word tyranny is defined as an excessive abuse of power. And my perception is that that's exactly what is happening down there in La Quinta Park. We need to cease and desist that excessive abuse of power. We do, before something that none of us wants happens. I feel personally that, and I, the tool that's being used down there, the Riverside Sheriff's, County Sheriff's Department, I do not feel is the right tool for that job. I really don't. I'm not saying that they're incompetent. I'm not saying that they're not necessarily good for the job. I'm saying that they're the tool, they're a tool being used, they're the wrong tool being used for a job. Okay? It's almost as though, you know, you're trying to push in a thumbtack with a sledgehammer. And I'm sure we could all agree that the sledgehammer is not the appropriate tool to push in a thumbtack, correct? I mean, I'm going to go ahead and make that assumption. There was a high level of arrogance among the officers down the park, even to me, and I was trying to speak to them, like I'm speaking to you right now, courteously, respectfully, and politely. And I was given, I was responded with nothing more than just indifference and arrogance, complete arrogance. And that's unacceptable, because I did not treat them in that manner. Some of these men and women that were in the park, that were camped out for hours and sometimes days, just waiting for someone to do something wrong so that they could write a citation, that's not what they're supposed to be doing. There were times when there were up to seven officers in that park. And it makes me wonder, if they're all there, then A, who is patrolling the rest of the city, and B, perhaps we're overstaffed with officers? I did speak with the captain. He called me almost immediately, I think it was the second day after. He was very polite to me. He seemed like, you know, he wanted to hear what I had to say. He kind of gave me his position on what was happening down there from his perspective. And he used words during our conversation like "investigation" and "peace officer." And I'll tell you that what I saw down there, that I personally witnessed, was not an investigation. It was an intimidation. And I am very capable of distinguishing between the two. And it was definitely intimidation. There was no investigation going on there. They came in full force. There were times when officers showed up wearing military flak jackets and gear like they were ready to go off to Iraq and kick indoors. And maybe that's, perhaps that's where they should be, but I don't believe that they should be in that park, in La Quinta Park. The captain also used the word "pig." And apparently, and again, I'm not here defending any of the young people, I'm just here telling you what my perspective was. I did hear a lot of things being said to the officers that should not have been said. Okay? So please don't get me wrong, I'm not defending what they did. And when I spoke to the captain, he said that the officers felt as though they were very disrespected, because many of the young people were calling them names like that, okay, or associated with that, synonyms to that effect. And I, I, not necessarily, I don't agree with what they were doing, but I want to give you an example of what had occurred down there, and as to why this, this, this constant, you know, bickering or opposition between these two groups is existing. There's a young man, and let's just say that his, the roof over his head and having three square meals a day isn't very consistent, and he spends a lot of time at the park. He's a young man. He's under 20, I think he's about 19 years old. During one of the, and apparently, one of someone at the skate park, and this is my understanding and it's second-hand knowledge, but apparently, my understanding was that someone had brought either a pellet gun or a BB gun to the park, and the police were called in. They came in in force, which I would expect, if somebody had called in, the fact that there was a gun being, you know, at the park, I would expect that. They had a group of young people that were all sitting down underneath a tree, they made them empty the contents of everyone's backpack. Should we wait for the city manager? Shouldn't he be here to?
He's checking on Mayor Protown. And it's, we can hear, it's microphones.
Yeah, okay, okay. They made this, they made this person empty out, and they knew this person, and they knew their situation, and they made this person empty out the contents of his backpack. And one of the contents in his backpack was a cheeseburger, a half-eaten cheeseburger that was being saved for a meal later that evening. And at some point, one of the officers, and we've identified which one it is, I'm not going to name that person right now, but we've identified the officer, actually walked up to where that boy had put down his cheeseburger, and he stepped on it and ground it into the ground. Now, I was also told that a few moments later, a different officer, apparently feeling pity for this young man, gave him $5 to go buy something else to eat. Now, initially, I thought maybe, you know how young people tend to embellish about things? I thought maybe it was an embellishment, but I heard it from several people, from several different people, and it was the same exact story. And I tend to loan that story some credibility for the simple fact that they said that another officer gave him $5. So apparently, somebody thought what had happened was wrong. Now, when I think of a peace officer, that's not the behavior that is exhibited by a peace officer. And I'm sorry to say, but it's more like the behavior that would be exhibited by a pig. And I hate to say that, because I'd like to think that La Quinta, the gem of the desert, wouldn't tolerate that type of behavior by an officer. I have witnessed several violations of not only the Eighth, but the First and the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution from these young people. And unfortunately, and sad to say, they didn't recognize it, but I did. And I had actually had a conversation in which I actually asked one of the officers if he knew what the Eighth Amendment of the Bill of Rights was, and he did not know. And I found it disturbing that that officer could, could recite an obscure penal code for having somebody's bicycle laying down on a curb, but yet not know the Eighth Amendment of the Bill of Rights. Our inalienable rights as U.S. citizens, coupled with the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, which is the supreme law, which supersedes local, state, and federal law, and I found that very disturbing. I would expect an officer of the law to know those 10 amendments and to ensure that every citizen received the benefit of the doubt when it came to those amendments. There is a sign there on the skate park, and the sign clearly states that there are no bicycles to be allowed in that park. And I've lived here for six years, and I've seen bicycles and skateboards and kids riding scooters and rollerblades in there, and they've all gotten along just fine. There hasn't been any problem. They've been able to coexist and been, you know, as far as I could tell, peaceful about So I think that there's an opportunity for us to do, to do a couple of things to rectify this current situation. And I would like an opportunity, maybe, to talk offline with you or some of the other council members. I have a couple ideas that can solve this problem, and it would be a win-win situation for everybody, for the community, for the city council, and for the people that use the skate park. And I hope that at some point, I do get that opportunity, because they're very simple, very simple plans. And last but not least, I wanted to follow up with, and earlier, I used the word tyranny. And embedded within the text of the Declaration of Independence, it says pretty clearly that "When the government imposes tyranny upon the citizens of this country, it is not only their right, but it is their duty to throw off the old government and make way for a new guard for the future security of this nation." However, it does not specify the manner or means in which the old guard is to be removed. We have a serious, serious issue here, and I know the last thing that any of you want to do is be grilled because some little six-year-old got killed by a stray bullet because some punk 15-year-old thought it was a good idea and was bent out of shape because he got another citation and threw a pop bottle, or a can, or a rock at one of these officers, and they just go to town. None of us wants that. Can I, can I assume that that's true, that none of us wants that to happen?
Public safety is our priority.
Okay. And I know, and like I said, I appreciated when you got back to me right away, because it made me feel as though it was important to you.
It's very important.
Along with everybody else that contacted me. So I do appreciate that. And I also, you know, feel that there are things that we can do to turn this situation around and make it a win-win-win situation for everybody. Okay?
Well, I will take you up on your offer, and I'm happy to follow up with you after today and set up time to meet.
That would be absolutely fantastic.
And we rely heavily on the expertise that we have with the Riverside Sheriff's Department and the officers involved. And I know that based on the communications that we've had and you've had with staff, we've addressed some of those with our assistant police chief and Captain Schouse.
Right.
And it's a balance between what they know and how they're going to handle situations. We definitely don't want any of them.
But they answer to you, correct?
They do answer, they are under contract, and they answer to us, although they have their own hierarchy within them, to deal with the performance issues of their own officers.
Right. But ultimately, you will make the decision as to what happens, as the mayor of this city, correct?
Based on recommendations from them as experts.
Recommendations or orders?
No, no, no. It's a collaborative effort. Again, it's about what's safe for us.
So then, so then, in the event that someone is shot, in the event that someone is shot, who will be, who will be the person that is questioned on why this happened? Will it be everybody? Will it be one person? Will it be the city council?
I'm thinking with the force that we have leading the city on public safety, nobody wants to have anybody harmed in this situation, any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Well, that's exactly what they're pushing for right now.
We'll talk about that at our own meeting.
Okay. Fabulous. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Oh, Mayor, by the way, I'm sorry. I got, when I had my meeting with Chris Escovedo, he told me to bring those in, and he assured me that he would take care of that for me. Thank you again, city council, for your help. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
At least you didn't tear us like the kids did. Okay. We will move on to skate park discussion further. Lori Harris. Again, name and address for the record, please.
Lori Harris, 79210 Lori Court. I am a mother of two skaters that go to both the parks, La Quinta and the Cove here. My boys are diehard skaters. They're very, very good. They're very serious about skating. They're not there doing drugs and alcohol. They're there to skate. I find this, a lot of what's going on up there extremely appalling. Again, I'm not here to throw stones at anyone. I'm a teacher, I'm a mother, and I'm extremely concerned and extremely sad. I don't understand a few things, like why the police car is pulling up onto the grass, standing about where I'm at in their car, this close to the skate park, and just staring at the skaters. Okay? I don't understand why there's eight or 10 police officers at one time marching. I don't understand why there's eight or 10 police officers at one time marching toward them as if they're going to grab them, brushing by them real hard with their shoulder, just shoving into a skater that was just barely, just walking and minding his own business. I'm not quite understanding some of these things. My 18-year-old son, again, minding his own business in the Cove two weeks ago, had a headset on, did not hear the officer yelling at him until people pointed. And he went, "What, what?" And the officer was literally very, very foul language, scared, and my son was shaking. The F-word was said many times. And, you know, "Why aren't you listening to me?" And just really just condemning my son. And my son, you know, said, "Officer, I didn't hear you." And then he just, he goes, "What?" You know, his worst crime at that point was wearing a helmet, not wearing a helmet, and not hearing the police officer. So the police officer says, "Well, I can tell, you know, you're a nice kid, but I have to give you a ticket. We're really cracking down. We're, we're really coming after all of you." And my son goes, "Okay, why am I getting a hundred-dollar ticket when the sign, which we took a picture of, says fifty dollars? Well, we're doubling everything." Again, I don't understand. A kid pulled a leaf off a tree, was given a ticket for destroying public property, I think they called it. I know a lot of these kids personally, and I'm taking it personal. I've lived in the desert 32 years, so I've known a lot of these kids since they were in kindergarten. Again, the bike-on-the-curb incident. Another kid did walk away swearing, but was put in shackles and taken to thermal as if he was selling drugs or doing something awful. Yes, cursing is bad, but he was put in shackles, and he has a metal plate in his ankles, and he kept saying, "This is too tight, this is too tight, you're hurting me." And we're talking about a 17-year-old boy, by the way. Taken to thermal, taken to another jail, I believe it was Indio, and literally put in shackles as if he was committing this huge crime in front of all the kids at the park. Again, I, I don't understand. I've, I've, I have heard, I've seen very disturbing videos myself, I've witnessed them. I held a meeting last Monday night. We had about 40 people, including teens, show up. We had managers from the skate parks show up. No one is condoning the improper behavior. What we're concerned about is downright bullying. What we're concerned about is the way these kids are being talked to that we've witnessed, and we've not only seen on videos, I've witnessed it. I walk that track there all the time. I've witnessed it. I, I was, I was talked to very rude before. So, again, we're very concerned. There's a small group, and we even told these kids at our last meeting, "Tell those kids to get away, to go somewhere else and do their stuff, okay? I can't come up here and drink a glass of wine. They have no business coming up here doing any of that either." But it's just a small bunch. It's not all of them. They all don't deserve this. They're being scared. My 12-year-old doesn't even want to go there anymore, with or without me. And he is a diehard skater. My question is, and I know it can't be answered right here at this moment, but why is this being allowed? I'm even watching the police following them in the street. Let them go on and on, but I know my time's up, and I think this is the first and many meetings that we have to have, because it's, it's, again, a lot is on video and pictures, and it's extremely disturbing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lori.
Jack Harris, 79788, Declaration Court, La Quinta. I'm here today because my son, that was my ex-wife, and my son has been bringing my attention and my stepson and everybody that, what's been going on with the police and, you know, I'm a firm believer in wearing helmets, and I'm a firm believer in doing what you're doing, but I'm here because if that happens to my son, then I'm going to have to deal with it, and I don't want to get in trouble. And I don't want my son getting scared by a cop. You know, if, if there's a problem, come and tell me, and I'll deal with it. Another thing, I take Jack all over Southern California to skate parks, and the skate parks that do not have somebody working there have this problem every single time. The ones that do have somebody there, for some reason, this doesn't go on there. And I've been to the biggest parks in Southern California. And I'm talking about a kid that sits at a table and checks an ID that you're a member of the skate park, and that's all they do. There's no graffiti, there's no pot smoking, there's no nothing, because I spend six, seven hours with my kid when he skates, because he's, he's a diehard skater. And when he talks to these pros on Instagram, I take him there, you know, and then because as long as he does good in school, I support him. So I just wanted to come today and say, I hope something gets addressed because I really care about my son.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
Farah Meadows, 45345 Deer Brook Circle, La Quinta. And coincidentally, I'm here to talk about a skate park. Didn't know about the issues, really. And for whatever reason, everything happens for a reason, and I feel like I am supposed to be here at this very moment in time. I'm probably going to get emotional. I come from a police family. My husband is a commander with the police department out here. My younger son is a police cadet. My dad's a retired police officer. My other son, John, diehard skater. I'm a school teacher. I used to teach at La Quinta High School, and I currently teach at Desert Ridge Academy. I'm a La Quinta resident. And there's so many connections that I feel are saying, when we're saying we've got to work together to, to come up with a solution, I feel like I'm somebody who could pull from a lot of different areas and who comes from a lot of understanding, and I would love to sit on a committee to help with the skate parks. So the reason I'm here. My son, John Meadows, was killed in a car accident on February 16th, 2015, when his driver, when the driver of the car fell asleep at the wheel. They were both college students in Long Beach. My son was 22 years old and a college student, going to school to become a fireman, paramedic. He also planned on opening up his own business, which of course would be a skate shop here in the desert. His passions were music, art, and skateboarding. He grew up at the La Quinta Skate Park. He graduated from La Quinta High School in 2010. His younger brother's a freshman there. Both were involved in ASV. And my son, John, was actually one of the seniors when I taught there. The graduating class of 2010 approached this city council about changing the street name to Black Hawk Way, and we were the group to do that, and I'm so proud. Every time I see that street sign, that my older son, John, had a part in that. My son is not royalty. He's not a famous musician playing at Coachella, and he's not a politician, but he's somebody who cared about his community, which showed in the 500-plus people who showed up to his celebration of life. So many stories that I've heard over the past few weeks of John constantly giving cheeseburgers to homeless people, or I remember one time I caught him going across the street to the skate park in the morning on a late start day, and he said, "Why are you going to the skate park? You need to get to school." He finally told me that a friend of his was living at Martha's Village and didn't have clothes, and so he would pack an extra outfit each morning and meet him at the park so he could change and have a different outfit for that day. Those are the examples of who my son was. One of his last videos on Facebook was him skateboarding in Orange County, and he said, "Why is everyone complaining about life? Someone always has it worse, just live it." And that's kind of become the motto for a lot of these kids, and a lot of kids are now starting this camp, this kindness campaign, and we actually are starting it where people commit to 22 random acts of kindness each year, and then they have to post about it, and it's called "John Made Me Do It," because he was always trying to get people to do good things, and he had a lot of faith. And so after his passing, they're start, they started a memorial at the skate park. I don't know if any of you saw it, but it started getting large, and it stayed up for week after week. And I know, you know, the city of La Quinta, I think the sheriff's department called Indian Police, you know, where my husband works, and said, "Hey, you know, we kind of need to take this down." And you guys were actually very kind to let us, it stay up. My birthday this year happened to fall on Easter, so it was fitting that that was the day that we took it down, and I, I let all of his friends know. I'm currently working with the parks manager of, with putting in like a permanent like bench or something where we could remember John. And so my proposal, I know that you guys are going to be renovating the park and looking at renovating the skate park. My proposal, I know this is not common, but would be to possibly, when you do remodel, is to name the skate park John Meadows Memorial Skate Park. I think we get a lot of support from the community. I am also willing to help donate to the, using some of his insurance money to help pay for the remodeling. It's unfortunate as a mom, I didn't spend a whole lot of time at the skate park. I think I've spent more time there since his passing, and I've got to meet so many of these wonderful young men and women, and it's unfortunate to hear a lot of what's going on, because I see a lot of both sides of it. And I want to do what I can to help bring everybody together with the remodeling. It's interesting because out here as a parent and a teacher and married to an officer, I was always nervous letting my son go to the skate park, because you do hear about the bad things that happen there, and it is a small group. And so it wasn't until my son went away to college and I started getting him out of the area to go to Van's Skate Park in Orange County and to see all these fathers with their sons and realize that there wasn't this negative stigma that skateboarders have locally. And I just thought, oh my goodness, the love for surfing and skating out in Orange County and, and LA County, it was amazing, and I thought, why can't we have that here? And I'm starting to see more of that at the more structured, like this gentleman said, the more structured skate parks, like the Palm Desert one or the Palm Springs Skate Park. And I know that the parks manager was mentioning something like that. I know my mom would tell you the difference, be like, "No, you can't have anybody there watching it, because then they lose their freedom." And so I think that there's a balance that we could meet that creates a safe park for everybody, and I know my time is running out. So I don't know if this is where it ends or where it goes from here, but I hope that you consider that. Like I said, I'm willing to use his insurance money to help with the costs of, of helping with the remodeling. And I would love, love, love to, when you do do the remodeling of the skate park, to really listen to the skaters and get their ideas. I'm a firm believer in that, that it's their park, their community, and I would love to sit on that community. I would be honored to. And like I said, I thank you for allowing for us to at least have the memorial bench, but if we could go that step further, I'd be eternally grateful.
Well, Farah, I can say I was very touched when the staff report came forward and indicated that you'd be here to present, and it is unfortunate that you're hearing some of the good and the bad of what's going on there, and we're determined to take care of, of those bad seeds in the best way possible. And we will definitely take this into consideration. I think it's commendable for the work and the legacy, and we do have that on our agenda as far as proposals of rehab. We've got to decide on several capital improvement projects. So I appreciate your ability to, and desire to volunteer.
Absolutely.
If we need that input, and we'll have you continue to work with staff as we progress, and we'll bring that forward another time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Is the "John Made Me Do It" on Facebook? Is it a page? Okay, all right. Did I say that right, Lilly?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lilly Choat. My address is 45890 San Gabriel Street in Indio. I am John's maternal grandmother. John was the love and the light of my life. My daughter Farah had him when she was 15 years old. So she has come so far, when she was told, you know, you won't amount to much. She received her doctorate degree from USC in 2012. She was a role model for John and for Brandon, my other grandson. And so I am so honored to be her mother and John and Brandon's grandmother. John grew up skateboarding. That was his passion. As a grandmother and as a young sixth grader, he would say, "Grandma, can you take me to the skate park?" Well, the only skate parks available were the one in Indio, which is no longer there. It was a temporary one. And then, of course, the Palm Desert one, which was a little bit farther. And then, of course, there was the La Quinta one. So any time of the day or night, weekends, weekdays, "Grandma, can you take me to the skate park?" "Yes, John, I'll take you." Most of the time, I didn't like leaving him there, so I would sit in the parking lot, and this is what I like about the La Quinta Skate Park. It is wide open. It is not just the skate park, but the whole park. With the, the bars that are around the park, everything is visible from wherever you sit. As a parent, as a grandparent, you can watch what's going on at the basketball courts, in the playground area, at the soccer fields, you know, at the skate park, just everywhere. So there is a feeling of safety. I see many, many, many families come from all over the desert to use this park, because it is, it is big, it is friendly, it, it just has this atmosphere. And yes, I do agree that there are, there is a small faction of people that are the bad eggs, and that's in any, in any form, in any place in life. It bothers me so much that the skaters are the ones that are being targeted. What about the basketball players? What about the people that are playing at the soccer fields or at the baseball fields or in the parking lots or, or anywhere in that park? It's, it's very insulting to me as John's grandmother to have John or, and even his friends or acquaintances be the targets of this, and, and I've heard this before as well, and it bothers me. I have seen over the years, and this is like 10 years at least, that I have been in and out of that skate park, either sitting there or even going into the skate park and observing, watching the kids. They take care of each other out there, and I'm not meaning, you know, that they protect each other from, you know, they're not going to tell the police, "Oh, you know, this is going on and so forth." They take care of each other. I have seen where John was there one evening, and these kids are starving, they're hungry. Maybe things are going on at home, and this is their meeting place, this is their safe place. And so somebody was leaving the park, they had a large pizza, and they offered it to the skaters, and about 10 guys just swarmed around that pizza, but they made sure every one of those guys had a piece. That's what I taught me, is that they watch out for each other, because maybe they're all they've got. Some of these kids, we don't know their stories. We can't judge what we see on the outside. My suggestion is that if the law enforcement, the school has resource officers, have a resource officer that maybe is assigned to the park area where they get to know the people of the park. And yes, some of them are outside visitors and so forth, but having John's memorial put out there. We've met so many people who are also parents who have lost children. We've got young kids who said, "What happened?" And, and it's a teachable moment for me to say, you know, when you, this is, let this be a learning lesson for you. Do good in life, do good in school. This was an accident that happened. He's no longer here, but he's in a safe place. But go out there and do good for this world. And that's all that these young people want, whether they are the basketball players or the soccer players or the baseball players or, or the bikers. Give them that opportunity. Look past what you see on the outside, and I know, you know, I've got a lot of people in law enforcement in my family, as well as being a former dispatcher. I know it's tough out there, and, and I sympathize with law enforcement, but also law enforcement has, has got to sympathize as well and empathize and, and get to know, and get to know the adults that are at that park, because we will help you. We're, we're not out here to attack, but to work together as a community, to coexist, just like everybody at the park coexists. Let the community, whether we're from Indio or La Quinta or Palm Desert or wherever, coexist together. And, and my one last thing that my daughter did mention, I have taken John to this skate park in Palm Desert. Having worked there in the past, the people that are supervising, I have known in the past that they, when it's their shift change, they don't get breaks, they haven't been given breaks in the past. It, it's a tough situation. If it is going to go that way, it's got to be very organized by the city of La Quinta. It's got, it cannot just be handed over and said, "Okay, you're watching the skate park." Those people that are there need to be respected as employees, because they have a big job to do, to, to take care of the people that they're overseeing and, and make sure that, you know, they're supervised as well and evaluated so that they can be the best for them. And also, again, my recommendation is to keep those open fences, because from the street, I could be driving by, and I can see, "Oh yeah, there's a lot of skaters out there tonight. I'm really glad." Or I can see the basketball players, or I can see the families out there. If it's blocked in, as, as I've seen so many parks, you can't see it, you're going to miss something behind block walls, that you're, you're going to miss something, and you want the safety of everyone, number one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lilly. Thanks for being a positive advocate for our community and our youth. All right, last request to speak is from Mary O'Brien Pritchard.
My name is Mary O'Brien Pritchard, 51336 Marbella Court. I have two quick questions. One, I'm here to encourage you to do something about the roundabout at Jefferson and 52nd. I've lived here for eight years. When I first encountered that roundabout, I had no idea how to deal with it. And for the most part, I try to avoid it, because most people don't know how to drive through it. A year ago, in March 2014, there was an article in the newspaper talking about how dangerous this intersection is and that- this intersection is and that something was going to be done. And one of the things that it said in the article was that was a one-lane turnaround about. And I always thought it was a two-lane roundabout, and I would get in it and I would hold my breath and try to cling to the inner lane until I could get out of it. So when I found out that it was a, supposed to be a one-lane roundabout, I was like, eureka, this is great. It's safe, you go in, you don't have anybody to worry about. But nobody knows to use it that way. And I almost had an accident. Like I said, I try to avoid it, but I was in it about three weeks ago. And I was using it as a one-lane roundabout, and a big white truck came up beside me planning to use it as a two-lane roundabout, and he was right there. Almost had an accident. About four days ago, a friend of mine emailed me and she said, I almost had an accident. I have talked with Tim Johnson, and I understand that they are working on something, but a year ago, the article in the newspaper said something was going to be done, and nothing has been done. I'm just here to encourage you to please do something with that roundabout to make it clear how do you use it and, you know, hopefully avoid something happening in the future. My other comment has to do with, I live at Jefferson and 50th, and we have been very heavily impacted by Coachella and Stagecoach. And I've been to city council meetings before, talking about the traffic and the noise and the airplanes and the dust and the, on and on and on. And I have to admit, things have gotten a lot better, and I appreciate everything that you've done on that end of it. There's one benefit to living close, and that is that we can walk to the concerts. And about five years ago, we walked to Stagecoach. We were able to walk down 50th and right into the venue. About three years ago, we walked down 50th, got so far, and then we were rerouted through parking and camping and through the dust and all the people. And my husband got sick because of all the dust. And there's like, I don't know how far it is, 100 yards, 200 yards, down 50th that they won't let you walk. And we have to be rerouted all through parking. I would like, you know, we've put up with a lot. I don't know if something could be done just for the people that are in the local community to kind of say, gee, you put up with a lot. Maybe we could get passes that would allow us to walk through 50th so we don't have to... It's like a mile for us if we could walk straight down there. I've talked with Amy here in the City Hall, and she checked to see, and she said nothing could be done now. But I would just like to throw it out there as, you know, something that might be done for those of us that live nearby and put up with some of the negatives, that we could have a little bit of a benefit. And even driving, we've driven over before, and they, we can't get down 50th to get back in. We have to go up to 48 and around this way and that way, causing more traffic. So think about doing something for the neighbors.
Okay, so first thing on the roundabout, that is another topic of discussion on our capital improvement project list, on allocating funds to reconfigure, re-stripe, et cetera, for improved traffic flow. So that is being discussed today and...
And I didn't want to wait around for that meeting, so...
No, that's okay.
That's why I thought I'd put my two cents worth in there.
And we appreciate that. And then in terms of the pedestrian access, there is a task force that meets every year that's a combination between the law enforcement, city of La Quinta has a representative, as well as Indios and the Colton Voice people. So that's definitely a collaboration on what's the best flow for traffic, pedestrian access, safety and security. So will Les is in the audience, so we will have Les take that to his meeting for probably, probably not this year, but potentially in years to follow based on, I've got friends that live in the area as well, and they have to take the long route around and, you know, again, they're always looking at ways to improve traffic as a whole. But I understand what you're requesting, and it's, my dad always taught me, never get what you don't ask for, so it's worth a try.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you coming down. Thank you so much, Mary. Okay, with that, let's move on to our consent calendar. We've got a couple requests for comments on items. We can do a motion on the amendment and then discuss those if you'd like.
If I can, Madam Mayor, on item number three, I need to abstain from item number three. I wanted to ask for a separate vote on item number eight, just for some discussion.
And the extension for three is?
La Quinta Farms is a client of our firm.
Okay. I'll take it. Interesting. Okay. Can we do a motion in a second first before we discuss?
All right, I'm with approval of consent items one, two, four, five, six, and seven.
Second?
The new six, because we've pulled six.
Oh, six has been pulled to...
I'm so sorry.
Dave just had a question.
Comments?
Yeah, just, yes, some questions on the eight.
So all but three amended without item number three, right?
Second.
Okay, now, now I'll take the discussion prior to calling the vote. There's a motion in a second.
All right, item number eight is where we are, we have executed a grant of easement and agreement for public tree purposes on Doom Palms Road and Desert Sands Unified School District. And this is that area basically along the high school on Doom Palms where we're going from the curb in six to 12 feet. I'm going to say, Tim, if I could ask. And my question really gets, and I've had a discussion with the city manager, but why do we want to take easement on that property and not, or rights on that property, not leave it to the high school to maintain and cover any costs associated with that property?
Well, no, no costs are being incurred that we don't have already. We are maintaining the street. Basically, this is a cleanup item from when the, when the school was, you know, built years ago. For some reason, this dedication was never recorded. So when the street, when they widen the street, you know, we pick that up under our maintenance. I checked with our maintenance staff, they're maintaining the parkway, so it really, there's no fiscal impact to the city, if you will, because it's really been, the part that, the street's been under our maintenance the whole time, and the parkway's been maintained by this whole district.
I understand the street. I, yeah, I can appreciate that. But just that other six feet after the curb, I mean, again, can't the school district maintain their own property there?
They are, and that's not going to change.
Okay.
Nothing's going to change. That's just kind of our normal dedication to make sure we got room for everything that we need to fit in the right of way.
That's, that's all my question was. Thank you, Tim.
And Chris, do you have a comment on number three?
I do have a comment on number three, and this has to do with the city and La Quinta Farms contract for PM10 at Silver Rock, right? On page 26, the agreement says, plant and grow 45 acres of rye. That has to be watered. Install above-ground irritation, more water. Plant 80 acres of section of sedan grass each year, water. Daily water truck operation. So given the latest news from Sacramento, are we being, are we going about this the right way? Are we being good examples of how to use water conservatively?
Steve?
Hi, Steve. Welcome.
Very good question. This is something that we felt would come one day. This is basically a conflict between AQMD mandates for dust control and conservation of water. So now these two entities are coming together. So we're going to need to meet with AQMD as well as CVWD to find a resolution to this because, as you stated, we literally dump thousands of gallons a day of water on the dirt roads. So is this necessary? Can we do it only on windy days? These are things that we have to discuss with AQMD, considering the new mandates by the governor.
Okay. So do we just go ahead and okay this?
In the meantime, we want, we want maintenance from a PM10 standpoint.
Exactly.
And because of the uses that we have on this property for different events, that's relevant and probably better health-wise.
I totally understand that. I don't have a problem with that at all, but we are, we are asked to okay this contract, and yet you're still going to do some investigation on it. I'd like to know if there's, with any of these areas that we could conserve water instead of dumping water all the time.
One of our challenges is the fines, AQMD levies, if we have a violation, and they're not inexpensive. So while the governor's mandate came out last week, all the rest of the organizations haven't caught up with it. So I guess we could certainly postpone this, but then if we have a dust event and we start accumulating fines, we're back to where we are.
Yeah, just as a July, just as a July 1 effect, so we've got, not that we're not currently doing this with the water, but in terms of going forward piece, that's, we can make modifications if we need to or just...
Madam Mayor, a question. Under the terms of the contract, was this even considered farming? Because farming is exempt from the governor's mandates, and that will give us at least a leeway until we investigate what we're going.
And technically, farming is exempt from AQMD mandates. That doesn't mean that's what we're hanging our hats on, but it was also a nice alternative, and it was supported by AQMD as well as the best control measures for dust on the property. So again, this is why we're going to need to meet with these two agencies to find out what the best direction for us to go is. But in expanding on what the city manager said about the fines, AQMD fines start at $10,000, and we negotiate down. So we have, we have been fined in the past, even with a farming contract, so this is what we're going to have to discuss.
Well, I guess, I guess the definition of farming in, in terms of AQMD would have to be toned down a bit. I don't think you could call growing rye and sedan grass farming.
Exactly.
And given that this gentleman has tried to farm, actually farm this property unsuccessfully in the past. So I, I just sort of wanted to make everyone aware of it, and as our development moves forward with Silver Rock, hopefully this will no longer be a problem. But it's certainly something that we, when we're talking about water, we can't be as assumptive as we have been in the past.
Yes, this, this report was written before the governor's mandates, and as you said, with the development coming, it's uncertain, so that's why we were just saying, let's go with a one-year extension.
All right.
And then next year, we can see where we're at on the development, and if the developer takes over the PM10 operations.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All right, at this point, we have a motion and a second on the amended consent calendar exempting, excluding item number three.
Excluding item number three.
Call for vote, please. Motion passes unanimously, and we'll take consent item number three.
Remove consent item number three.
Second?
Motion and second, please vote. Motion passes with four yays and one abstentions. Okay, we'll move on to business session items. Item number one, appropriate funding, add focused drainage study project to fiscal year 2014-15 capital improvement program, and approve, and approve a professional services agreement with RBF Consulting for the drainage study.
Madam Mayor, before the staff report, if I can, this item includes professional services as provided by NAI. And the contract as a whole with NAI was passed without, with my absence, with my...
Your abstention.
Abstention, right, I stepped away from the DS. So our legal counsel can take this point.
Sure, I had been advised of this, and under new FPPC regulations, there have been some changes that are just now taking effect. But given that the NAI has not been expressly identified, and there is no, they are not specifically contracted with this particular item, it would be okay for you to participate. Of course, if you would prefer just to refuse yourself, you may, but it would be okay.
Okay. Thank you. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, as you're aware, we had a heavy storm on September 8th, somewhere between a 400 and a 1,000-year storm that inundated parts of the city and caused some significant flooding to both public property as well as private property. The item before the city council tonight is to hire RBF Consulting, a engineering firm, to do what we're calling a focused drainage study on the area you see in green that was hardest hit by the storm in September. The consultant will be basically preparing a drainage study to take into account the watersheds that fit, that feed this area, taking a look at both the underground pipe systems as well as the above-ground streets that carry the storm water to the various retention basins and other locations where we're able to store water. And then, as an ultimate product, we will, we'll have a, we'll have a flood model for this area that will be able to, we'll be able to see what the existing system is able to handle in 2D. And then if, as we add improvements, we'll be able to see what those, how those help the system or help, help the situation. And by doing the modeling this way over an area, it will give us the impacts that you might not see if you just focused on one or two of these areas. And so it's a staff's recommendation that we move forward with this hydrology study that's going to be completed this spring and this summer, and, and we'll have the results late summer, early fall. And then we'll be looking at capital projects at that time that come from this. That concludes my staff report. I do have members of RBF here if you have detailed questions, and I'd be happy to answer anything that you have.
All right, questions for staff?
I do have just one. On page 60, note that there were seven proposals from qualified engineering firms. My question is, was there a large discrepancy in the bid process?
Well, we, we actually only are capable of looking at the top consultants after they go through what we call a qualif, we evaluate the qualifications of these consultants, and then, and then we negotiate the price from there. And so it's not the same as a capital project when, where we are taking the lowest qualified bidder. This is a different process than that. So I was not able to open all seven of the, of the proposals under that, under that scenario. And we can, we've had actually quite a bit of discussion about our procedure for, for selecting consultants in terms of opening proposals because, under the state's guidance, you aren't to use price as a differentiator. And, and so we followed that for this, for this analysis for selecting this consultant.
So in essence, you just only looked at one price, which was theirs, but you did qualify each of the people who applied, but without looking at what their bid was.
We, what we did, the process that we followed is that we ranked the, the consultants first, shortlisted them to the top three or four. I think we had three consultants, interviewed them, and then looked at, we did look at the top two proposals for comparison and also to, just to verify the scope of work, but, but we didn't go beyond that.
Okay. I totally understand what you're saying, and I'm glad to know about that portion of the process. Historically, sometimes the lowest bid, we see a lot of change orders and so forth and so on. So that's the primary reason for my questioning. It's not to question your ability to do this, but I just wondered what the process was. So, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions, staff? Thank you.
Tim, this report then is supposed to take about five months to complete, and so we'll have it September-ish based on the staff report. My concern is that quite often, we get the monsoons in August.
Right.
And so, you know, I'd hate to get a report too late and say, oh, we should have done this, or we should have made some changes prior to August monsoons. So as they do their study, will there be information given to you and your department on anything that should be done sooner than later to be ready for summer monsoons?
Well, I, we can, we can do that. The, the challenge I see there is that they're going to be looking at probably some fairly significant projects that will take at least six months to, a year to design and actually get into construction. And so I don't, you know, I don't see as we can, we can do if we have a minor improvement that we know needs to be done. And there, and we do have a couple of those from past CIP projects. The, the drainage on Avenue 50 might be able to be looked at earlier. Same thing at Bermudas in Tampico, we had identified those two areas and had storm drains that, that could have been, you know, that, that we were looking at, let's put it that way. I think what we want to make sure we do, though, is that we don't rush out and go and put in a pipe and then, then find, you know, as we're going, working through the model that, oops, we undersized it, or we oversized it, or we didn't take into something else into account. And in our haste to get out there and, and address something that we, you know, we do something that, that is short on the design. So, so I, I, you know, I, I hear... So, so I, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. I'd, I'd like to be able to do this, have the study done and, and be in design as fast as possible. It's just the, it's going to take time to, to prepare the, the, the study that we're looking for, and the modeling that we're going to get from this is a significant effort, and it's just, it's going to take, these guys are experts in their field, but it's going to take that amount of time to put the report together.
Now, in the area, it marked in the green, and I, I mentioned this with the city manager earlier, I mean, one of the areas that we had a major problem was in Avenue fifty-two, right in front of Silver Rock, or maybe a little west of Silver Rock, and I understand part of that's going to be going to the developer of Silver Rock at some point in the future.
Right.
But, I don't know that they're going to change the drainage area in that area where we had the flooding back in September more versus other parts of Silver Rock that they will be developing. So, my, my concern is that that area we consider also in here.
Absolutely. RBF is the, the drainage consultant for, for the development of Silver Rock as well. The area on, on Avenue fifty-two that flooded is going, is, even though it's slightly off the, the green map here, is going to be part of their analysis. We're just, they just didn't show it on this particular map, but it will be picked up because, as you know, the entire Tampico system ends up dumping on Silver Rock.
Did RBF work with us when we made the major drainage to that area, when we pushed the water down to the end of fifty-two and Jefferson area?
No. It was, Stan Tech was the design engineer for the big, the large storm drain that we installed from basically our, by the traditions, all past our entrance was a Stan Tech design.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No, call for motion.
Madam Mayor, just one thing, if it hasn't been stated, one of the aspects that we're going to be doing in conjunction with this is doing the financial analysis, and Ted Chubb of the manager's office will be working on that, to look at what benefits from a funding standpoint the city may derive from an infrastructure financing district. So, we're also going to be looking at funding options at the same time.
Well, and of course, this is the first step. One of the things I wanted to comment on is the fact that staff report does say that the city suffered an estimated 15 million in damage, yet we had communicated that we weren't qualifying for FEMA, and upon clarification, it wasn't the structural damage needed to qualify for FEMA. Hence, there was still an enormous amount of, of damage done, it just didn't meet quite the requirements. And the funding piece is, is a whole separate issue to, to look at, and all the opportunities via bridges and C-VAG and, and grants of sorts, to figure out how we then prioritize what, what's out there. And that, again, is on that list of, of areas to enhance and address. But, this is our first step to changing the standard that we're meeting right now with the county, and developing our own standard to ensure flood control in the future, knowing that this is now our new norm. So, thank you, Tim. All right, with that, I'll call for motion.
I will move to appropriate funding and amount of 191,800 dollars for unappropriated general fund reserves to add the focused drainage study project for the city's fiscal year 2014, 2015.
There's a motion and second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Business session, item number two, approve second round community service grants and funding request. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and city council members, today we bring to you the second round of community services grants for this fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. City council budgeted $60,000 for this fiscal year's community services grants. City council awarded $27,000 in the first round, leaving $33,000 in the account. The city received $25,045 in grant requests the second round, and the ADHOP committee is recommending funding for $13,045 to six nonprofit organizations. The six organizations are as follows, along with the recommendation. La Quinta High School Black Hawk Brigade Wind Symphony for $5,000. General Patton Memorial Museum for $2,500. The Desert Symphony for $2,000. Assistance League of Palm Springs Desert Area $1,710. Loving All Animals $1,000. And La Quinta Middle School Math Field Day Team for $835. That thereby concludes, concludes my staff report, unless council should have any further questions.
Questions for staff? That'll, I'll move for a motion.
Well, question. The only thing, and I, in agreement with recommendations, however, under the General Patton Museum, I know that that was going to be used for capital expenses. I would just like to see that that is used for capital expenses, whether we get a bill for air conditioning, or whatever, we pay that, or somehow it goes to that, so we can do that, and make sure that it's earmarked up.
When the organization was informed of this possible grant funding, they were informed that the condition be that it only go for capital improvement of that West Wing of the museum. It was actually listed as such. And then when they expend those funds, they actually also have to provide a reconciliation report, which staff will make sure the receipts are according to the condition.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have to say, I do like the fact that we're moving in that direction, where we, we put our own contingencies and focus on La Quinta based on the request. Kristi and I had the grant committee meeting for Desert Classic Charities yesterday, and we actually added a little bit of La Quinta to that and made a couple
Contingencies.
Approvals based on certain conditions. And they like that concept, because it allows us to ensure that the monies that we are approving are going towards what we believe is the right thing for the community or the organization. So, good job. Thank you, ADHOP members, for serving.
Move the staff recommendation.
One second.
Thank you, there's a motion and second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Must be grants in the audience, so congratulations, and keep up the good work.
And, Mr. Counsel, just for a moment, my name is Mike Pierce, the general manager for the General Patton Memorial Museum.
Welcome, Mike.
And I just want to enlighten you a little bit for the necessity for us to reach out to your wonderful city again. Seven months ago, Kaiser Permanente Medical Center contacted the museum and told us that their twenty, their nineteen-year-old, 6,000-square-foot training center either had to find a new home or they would have to demolish. And after Kaiser was unable to find an appropriate nonprofit to give that building to in San Bernardino County, they reached out to the museum. And we kind of exhausted some of our reserve funds, but we literally had that building taken apart in ten sections and moved to the Shereco Summit. The building has been put back together in its original condition, attached to the west end of the museum. And thanks to wonderful funding from communities like yourself, we will build up the reserves necessary to convert that 6,000-square-foot West Wing into a state-of-the-art additional display area, a library research center for high school and college students. We have over 5,000 books, documents, biographies, maps, that no one gets to see. And thanks to your generosity, that West Wing will include a state-of-the-art research library center for high school and college students all over the Southwest. So, thank you for helping us make it happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to business session, item number three, approve amendment with Riverside County Department of Animal Services for animal field services. Staff report.
Madam Mayor, council members, as we have been venturing through our business processes and looking at efficiencies within the process, one item that's come up has been the matter of animal licensing and that service that we, we provide here at the city. As you know, about two years ago, the city contracted with Riverside County Department of Animal Services for our after-hours animal control on, which would be after-hours and all-day Sunday. It's been a great relationship, it's worked out quite well, their ability to provide that service for us. So, as a result of that, we decided to reach out to the county and further understand their process. They do provide a licensing service, they actually provide that service for several cities currently within the Coachella Valley. As we looked into it further, we found out that by contract with them, it would actually reduce our service costs by over $20,000 annually. It would also expand access to the dog licensing process, as they have a 24/7 web-based mechanism to be able to register and renew your animal licenses. And we also believe that there's a greater opportunity for revenue recovery by devoting greater staff resources to that effort. And we believe that because there are several other cities currently in the valley providing that same service, that there's a benefit regionally for you to provide as well. So, we have proposed before you this, this afternoon, a, a contract reflecting that service. We do have some additional steps that we would need to continue with, and that is to extend our existing contract with the county after this step, or to continue that after-hours and Sunday service with the county going forward. As I mentioned, it's been a great opportunity, and we want to continue that in the future. That we'd be coming back with an amendment or municipal code. There are some inconsistencies with the county's standards, we mentioned a couple of those to you a few weeks ago, but we want to investigate that, look into it further with regards to microchipping, the possibility of, of addressing certain breeds of animals and their ability for reproduction. We also are looking into a established and go-live date for that conversion to occur, certainly making sure we have a, a very aggressive public outreach campaign. We know that our residents going this direction will be needing to acclimate and adjust to that, that matter, and we certainly want to be of resource and assistance in, in making sure they understand how that process works. And that would also include establishing a kiosk here at City Hall near the customer center that would provide opportunity for them to directly access that information in the county's website here at City Hall. So, with that, I want to recognize Ted Chubb, he's been a great resource to me in, in working through this effort, and we'll, Ted and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
I have, but
Yes.
Let's start on the other end.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Just, as we're, it seems like we're on a path to working more and more with Riverside County, and I'm all for this, I'm not wrong with this at all. Do you think that perhaps in the future, they will do all of our animal control, giving us the opportunity to use those employees in a different, maybe more constructive way?
Yes, as we're addressing co-compliance services, one of the items that we'll be looking at over the next few months is that opportunity possibly of weighing the pros and cons to possibly having the county provide all of our animal services. They do that currently for Palm Desert, and
Indio?
And Indio now as well?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. So, we'll definitely be looking into that and be reporting back to you once we conclude that, that investigation.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How many cities mandate microchipping? Since ours currently doesn't, until we do this contract, and then it will.
Boy, that, you know, that is a great question. I don't know the exact
And do we know how much microchipping costs?
That's fun, where you have a dog. Almost Americans does, though, for not so much money.
So, I've heard comments about the fact that it's a benefit to license here, because they don't have to pay a fee to do microchipping, but then our residents will have to pay a fee, so we'll have to look at what that fee is.
Correct. As we bring that item back to you for your consideration, we are certainly prepared to answer the questions, how many cities are providing it, what that cost is. The county has even offered to bring in some of their key staff that provides that service to be able to answer those questions as well.
And then just one comment that's in the amendment about midway between lines thirteen and fourteen on the left side, talks about the county verifying dog license status when responding to complaints about animal behavior. When we listened to the comments by the Swarthout family and the dog attack, we wanted to enforce, as we're changing our codes, how do we make sure that we prohibit dog licenses from people that have been fined in other cities for having bad dogs, allowing them to come into the city? So, we want to make sure that as we're looking through this, that we add some type of provision that protects us under the county licensing process from prohibiting those dogs to move into our city.
Absolutely. It's, I didn't mention that this evening, but that's on our list of matters to be reviewing and bringing back to you.
Okay, very, very good. I support it as well. Great, great collaboration. With that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve a staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. A little slow on seconds tonight, that's all right. Motion and second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Tim, and us. Okay, next business session item, introduce ordinance amending three chapters of Title I and the municipal code relating to general provisions, and eight chapters of Title II relating to administration personnel.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members.
Good doozy.
This is a doozy. We take on Title I and Title II of the municipal code. The municipal code, many parts of it, especially of Title I and Title II, were adopted by Ordinance Number Two in 1982, when the, when the city was incorporated. So, at that time, the staff that the city had would take provisions from other cities that they thought were workable, or from the county, because they had to create a municipal code day one. So, you know, Ordinance Two, I think, has about forty different chapters in it. A lot of these from Title I and II are from Ordinance Two, and have not been really examined since 1982. So, that's what we're doing tonight. So, I'll go over the chapters where there's significant change. We won't talk about the pronoun changes or verbiage changes. So, I want to look at chapter 1.01.003, which lists the contents of the code. Now, you adopt many ordinances, some go into the code and some don't. Ordinances are laws of the city. The ones that don't go into the code, we have to list here. And we have things like calling an election, annexation, you wouldn't put, that's a law that you would put in a municipal code. What was missing from here were development agreements. You adopt development agreements as, as cities do, by ordinance. That should have been in here, it's now listed in here. Then we, then we look at the maintenance of the code. I guess in the early days, when, before we had electronic means of, of searching our code within seconds, everybody had paper copies of the code. So, I've addressed that by reducing it to requiring my office to always have one paper copy, but no one ever uses it. We don't even distribute to city departments anymore, they don't want it. It's on the website, all the developers search it, you can search by word, and that's where all of staff goes. So, I've reduced it to one paper copy being required by my office to be kept, and upon request, we will provide it to any other department. It also, in the maintenance of the code, I, it had a requirement for the city clerk to twice a year publish or codify the ordinances that you had passed up until then. We don't do that twice a year anymore, we don't need to do it twice a year. The city is pretty well-established, you aren't passing dozens and dozens of ordinances, so, although this may be different with all these, with all these titles addressed. But, I, I wanted to put in there that a minimum of once a year, but not a requirement to do it twice a year. So, we could do it more often in years where we are passing many, many, many ordinances, but as you pass them, our codification company, our publishers, keep our web-based municipal code up to date. So, even though the paper one may not be, the, the one that is used by most people is up to date.
Susan, quick question on that. What is the timeframe of those updates? If we approve something today, how long does it take the codification entity to make an update happen on the website? Is it within, do they have a requirement within two weeks, within one week, within a month?
The, the update is done within about two weeks. By the time we get it signed and formatted and up to them, and they get it, alert, they put an alert on the, on the website, it's, it's usually shorter, but it can be as much as two weeks.
And then what's the process of you confirming that that's been updated?
Well, my staff, certain members of my staff are responsible for that, to make sure that it gets on the website, gets into the paper booklet, when it does come out, once or twice a year. So, it's something that the clerk's office does.
So, they're only checking on it once or twice a year, but it could be updated every time?
No, they're checking on the web-based
Okay.
More often. It's, it's the, the publication they check when it, when it comes out.
Okay.
It's, it's the, the publication they check when it, when it comes out. So we're still on Title One, and we're looking now at the definitions. That's entitled, I'm sorry, Section 1.01.170. And we, I expanded the definition here. A council member was listed only as a person who is duly elected. Well, there are circumstances where you have a vacancy, and a valid council member is duly appointed to fill the term of a vacated seat. So that's been added. Further on, at the bottom of that same section, there was a vague reference to approved language. So I asked Bill to, to give me something more concrete. It just seemed like something that was ripe for somebody to make an issue of, so he did, and we've got our definitions tied to a nationally recognized and published dictionary.
That is good, would be good.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
The next section that has anything significant is 1.01.230 regarding punishments. And a simple change here, we had put in here that imprisonment in the county jail may be an option that the council imposes. We thought that it was not up to the, the city council to determine in what jail people should go to, should they, should they require punishment. So we just, we left jail, of course, but we took out the county jail. That way, whatever may happen in the future, wherever people are best sent is where they'll be sent, and this won't limit that. The next section is also, no, it's 1.01.260 regarding nuisances and recovery of expenses. In Section E there, we have added, and this is done in a few places in the code where it's applicable, we have added the option for the city to recoup fees, expenses, monies, fines, anything that it has owed, its debts. Where it's permitted by law, they can assign that to a third-party collector. So it doesn't mean that you will do that or have to do that. We just put it in as a third option. Okay, and the next is 1.01.300. Now, this was, this is an important section. It's regarding notices, and it defines, it henceforth will define how the city is required to provide notices for any reason whatsoever that it provides notices. What happens is throughout the code, with a few things, but certainly with notices, every section that says a city has to provide you notice, it had a, a sequence on how the city would do that, and they were all different. Not drastically, but they were all different. So what is done here is as we get to all of those, those will be deleted, and, and we've encompassed every situation, every type of notice that the city would have to issue, and put it in this one section. Therefore, it'll always be consistent. Staff will always know, the attorneys will always know, and anybody who expects notice from the city can go to this one section and know how it will be provided, or how it can be provided. And as, as I bring all the different chapters to you, anything that has that antiquated notice or a notice different from this, we'll be deleting and referring back to this. And you'll see that that, that's true with a few different things, especially appeal processes. We have, we have so many different appeal processes in every section of the code that we're going to try and, or we will consolidate that also. Now we'll go to Chapter 1.04. That is regarding the city seal. In 1982, when this was listed, the city seal was to be the name of the city and then the date of incorporation, 1982, and that's it. So since then, the seal has been, you know, changed and some designs, some new text, gem of the city, the rainbow, the quail, the, the sunset. So in order to allow for that, and for you to change that from time to time as you so choose in the future, what, what we've done is put in just a simple sentence that says by resolution, the city council can adopt additional text, additional graphic design that can be added to, to the seal, and that you can change from time to time. And the benefit of doing it by resolution is, is time. An ordinance takes first reading, second reading, and then thirty days to take effect. A resolution is immediate.
So do we still want to keep the provisions of circular and form and not less than two inches in diameter, or again, that provision allows us the flexibility?
Well, that would be the base. You would, if, unless you want to change it, you would, you would keep the name of the city, the state, and you would keep incorporation 1982. So that would be a given. If you, if you don't want any given whatsoever, then, then I'll take direction and rewrite that.
I don't think it, I just, in the essence of time, we'll roll with the ability to add text and or wrap it, which is circular form at two inches still sounds restrictive, but... Glad you're spending time on having a specific question there.
Well, that's easy enough to change, Madam Mayor, should, should you put that in your motion. Okay.
Do you have a preference? Do you feel like it has to be round and within two inches? It could be square, it could be oval, it could be... So I don't mind keeping the city of La Quinta, California in incorporation in eighty-two, but maybe we freeform it, knowing that we've got a brand concept that we're entertaining, and that might include this here.
You might want to put it off all the time, but never mind.
Exactly. Okay. That can be rewritten and rolled. The next chapter is Chapter 1.09 regarding administrative citations. And this, if you look at Section 1.09.010, you'll see that for the first time, I refer to that notice section and cross out that inconsistent notice section there.
Right.
And in Section 1.09.030, there are, there's, I'm deleting the entire thing because later on, I refer back to the notice section again.
Right.
So we don't need that. We can get rid of that entirely. Section 1.09.070, we, for more flexibility, which, which is a theme here, to, to give council the most flexibility we can, yet let citizens know what the laws of the city are, instead of putting a specific title of, of a director, we've left it to the, the department overseeing the matter. That, because as we know, we've done it recently, city departments change names, change responsibilities. So there are a couple instances where we've made it very general, and that can, that's the same with Section C there below that.
Right.
We just generalized it. In 1.09.080, hearing procedure, at the recommendation of our city attorney, we added that the deposit given for an administrative citation before a hearing is done, the deposit is held in a separate account in trust pending the results of that hearing.
Is that just, would that be a hearing account or for every single one that makes a deposit?
No, it could be just an account. We want to keep track of the individuals who do deposit, but it would just be held in trust in a separate account so that if it needs to go back, it'd go back.
Okay, 1.09.090, administrative order. Again, here's the notice section. I crossed out the, the procedure that was there, and we're referring back to the consistent procedure in Section 1.01. And again, in B and C, we're generalizing the, the name of the staff person to allow And those are the major items in Title One. Now, if we go to Title Two, the first chapter is 2.04 addressing council. In Section 2.04.020, originally it was put in that the council meetings will be held at the civic center. Since then, this whole complex has become known as the civic center, and this building has become known as City Hall, so that's just been clarified. On 2.04.050, compensation and reimbursement for council.
Question before we go beyond that, is we talked about maybe having rolling council meetings. Is that given either to have a meeting outside of the civic center?
These are for regular meetings, but...
Right. Without, say we have a regular meeting, but we have it somewhere else.
No, we'd have to call that a special meeting, or, or we make this more general.
I know we've had special meetings, whether it be at the senior center or we're having a couple of different places.
Library.
The library as well. Yeah, we've had...
But they're special meetings.
But they're special.
We would, we would just call...
We just continue to have that special meeting as...
Yeah. I don't think we'd ever move the regular, the first and third Tuesdays.
Matt, I was just going to recommend regular meetings be here designated at a specific place because the Brown Act would require a designated place for the regular meetings.
So I didn't realize that if the mayor feels somebody is, has misconduct and we can call them and they're, be asked to kept quiet in order to do so, it's actually a misdemeanor?
Mm-hmm.
That seems odd, so would you have to have a sworn officer present to claim that misdemeanor?
Mm-hmm.
On 0.030, improper conduct in a meeting. Anybody using profane, vulgar, loud, or boisterous language in any meeting or otherwise interrupting the proceedings, refuses to be seated or kept quiet in order to do so by the mayor or other presiding officer, is guilty of a misdemeanor.
Does that include council members?
Yeah.
That, that is, that is, that's the law of the land right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Someone said it would have the perks. Or misdemeanor. Wow. Okay, compensation reimbursement.
Compensation and reimbursement. Now, this, this has had in there compensation for private u, use of a council member's private mobile phone for, for city business. We expanded that because we've gone beyond just, just mobile phones. We've expanded it to electronic devices and personal data services that council members use for city-related business communications. Now, instead of, what was in here was the reimbursement amount of $25. Instead of having that in the municipal code, what I've done is, is related to what is reimbursed to city employees in the personnel policy, which is adopted by resolution, which is more, is more, because it's adopted by resolution, it's more fluid, it's more flexible. So by relating to that, then council members would be reimbursed the same amount that city employees would be eligible for. Section 2.04.100, appeals to council. Now, this, this goes from 100 all the way to the end of this chapter, to 130. And this appeal to council section has been rewritten, as I spoke of before, to cover all circumstances in the code. And as the sections come up, we'll delete it out of there, all the various procedures, and refer back to here. And you'll see that with appeals to council, there, I think there's four appeal processes, council, city manager, administrator, and director, department director. So what I've tried to do is pull those from everywhere, make one consistent, and, and you'll see that as we go through. The next section is 2.08, city manager, deals with the city manager.
For the whole stretch, yes.
Section 2.08.050 is the designation of a city manager. What was in there was that the assistant city manager would be the manager pro tem. That position doesn't exist anymore. It may never exist. It may come back. It doesn't matter for flexibility. We will leave in there the second paragraph, which says that the city manager, by letter filed with the clerk, can designate any qualified officer, administrative officer, to serve, temporarily serve. Now, what we, what, what has been added is that should the city manager be removed or the position be vacant, then of course he or she is not going to be appointing and acting or interim, but the city council would. So that's, that was added to make sure that's clear. The next section of note would be H in that same, no, the powers and duties of the city manager, point O six O, section H. Throughout the code, the city manager is given all sorts of titles, so those titles are reflected here. Some of them are purchasing agent, tax collector, tax administrator, fee administrator. So I thought, you know, that, that if we're going to give him those responsibilities or her throughout the code, we should probably have it listed in their duties. So that's what's been done there. Also in the city manager section, in suspension pending a hearing, should the city manager be suspended from his or her office? We had in there that he or she would be removed by resolution of the council passed subsequently to a hearing. But what we had to add is that the removal may be as a result of just a, a letter saying to him or her that they are so terminated, and they walk away. So that, that's always an option. It's not always going to be as a result of a hearing. The next section is 2.08.180, and that is the appeals to the city manager. So that did not exist. That's been added, and instead, as I said, it was sprinkled throughout the code, so it'll be, it'll be removed from, from every place in the code, and this will be referred to. The next chapter is city clerk, 2.10. And very simply, what I added to this chapter are the duties that were overlooked somehow, and those are the clerk duties related to the Ralph M. Brown Act and the Public Records Act.
Go to details.
Can't see, back to the 2.08.120 removal.
Yes, 120.
Right. Does it, I mean, we've got employment contracts with the city attorney, or excuse me, city manager. So do we need to say anything that if something within that contract is broken or...
Great.
That, that's, because my concern is, hey, if something is done by the city manager that is against the contract and therefore is, is relieved based on the contract, do we still have to pay that person based on this language until we have a regular council meeting and make a resolution to, to remove the city manager? I mean, we almost had this issue ten years ago.
Well, the effective date would be the date that... Well, the effective date would be the date that written notice is given, or the date of resolution after you provide a hearing. So if the removal date would be, say you give a notice to the city manager that you're terminating his or her contract, that would be the date of termination unless the city manager requested a hearing. If he or she requests a hearing, then that would be, the conclusion of that hearing would be the removal date, assuming you passed a resolution to remove him or her. So monetary compensation would have to follow the contract, but you would assume that most contracts would pay someone until formal removal.
And for clarification, if I may, under that removal process where it says that it's a majority vote, the whole council has then constituted in a convenient regular meeting, is that council members present at that meeting or the whole council must be present?
Where is that?
2.8, it's 2.808.175.
About 100.
175 on the attachment.
If I may, Madam Mayor, or Councilmember Penya. When you have language that is whole council or entire council, that's usually interpreted to mean all five.
And it says convenient regular council meeting, which...
That's correct, but when there's language that says a majority vote of the whole council or entire council...
Okay, the next section we're going to look at is Chapter 2.12 Regarding the Director of Finance. Originally, back in 1982, this position was called Director of Finance and General Services. We're just clarifying that, getting rid of that, and also deleting duplicative duties that were in the duties list. So that's it for that one. Chapter 2.40 Construction Board of Appeals. If you remember, last year, you addressed all the boards and commissions and updated everything. Well, this is our, this is the only board that deals with appeals, so we're, and since it's before us, we're going to refer to the Notice section that we've redone and also the Council Appeals section, so we'll...
We've done, I mean, they've met so many times.
Chapter 2.44 Peace Officer Training Standards. This chapter was pulled into La Quinta Code in 1982 again by ordinance two. It applies to cities who have their own police department and wish to apply to the state for funds for training those police. So we will eliminate that chapter, and should the city ever get its own police department, I'm sure it'll need an entire title, not just a chapter. Chapter 2.55 Deals With Holidays The City Is To Observe. Again, for flexibility, we're going to pull out the list of the actual days that will be holidays. If you remember, you expanded on that last year. So we thought it was better to have it, it's also in the personnel policy that you approve by resolution. So we'll just refer to that personnel policy. And if you want to change it over the years, you can do it fairly easily, and we'll clean this up a little bit. And the last one is Chapter 2.65 Art in Public Places. The Community Services Director read this through with me and for me, and her suggestion in the, in Section 2.65110, which deals with the fund, Art in Public Places Fund, is to increase the timetable from two to five years during which the city has to commit the funds before they have to reimburse the developer. Now, that's consistent with the timetable for similar funds such as your DIF funds. It gives two-year, it gives the city process, including yourselves at the end of that process, more time to find the correct location for a major piece of art, to find the right piece of art. And they're usually quite large. And also, if you increase it to five years, it gives you an opportunity to build up a pool of funds that will allow you to get a piece of art that you would not have been able to get before. And now that the city developed, not to the max, but closely, you're going to need a greater pool to, a longer period of time to get a pool of money. So that was the recommendation, so that is in there.
Do we need to add anything about the art loan programs we have, similar to what we just did with the Roadrunner, where we have a mechanism for this that maybe at no cost, but it's part of the ATP provision?
I think...
It better be by resolution, yes.
Yes, yes, as much as you can do, whatever, certainly what's required by state law, you're going to want to have in your municipal code, and what you want as law of the land, law of the city. But for flexibility for yourselves, for staff, for the residents, to do things as much as you can by resolution is going to work better.
One last question. All of these changes still protect our position as a contract city?
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't want the state to think otherwise.
You mean contracts...
By some weird way they read this.
You're very much still a charter city.
He means charter city, yes. We have not touched the charter, and as far as a police contract city, this does not change any of that either. The charter will remain, it is, there's no reason to change it, we reviewed it, we're fine with our charter. And it's like a constitution, it's like a page and a half, yeah. So that concludes the report. Madam Mayor, council members, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
We recognize, Susan, that this is a tedious process, and we appreciate the time and meticulous nature that you've given to this, knowing that this is the first step of many. And appreciate the ease of which you've provided to us in terms of the red lines so we can kind of compare and contrast and ask those questions, so. I don't have any questions if anybody else does.
But with that, Madam Mayor, if I could, I'll move to adopt ordinance 524 by title and number only in way for the read.
There's a motion in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, green, red, yellows, blue.
I've got it all as yes. Okay.
Susan, you need to read the ordinance to them all.
I'm ahead of the fake. I'll read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Quinta amending several chapters of Title I and Title II of the Municipal Code.
And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll move to introduce the first reading of ordinance number 524, amending Municipal Code chapters 1.01, 1.04, and 1.09 relating to general provisions in Chapters 2.04, 2.08, 2.10, 2.12, 2.40, 2.44, 2.55, and 2.65 relating to administration and personnel matters. Second?
There's a motion in second, please vote.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, red is light burning up. We'll move on to our last business session item, and that is the award of a contract to Golden Valley Construction for the perimeter landscaping of city-owned lots on Avenue 52 project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. This item is the award of contract for the lots that the city owns, basically on the Northside Avenue 52 between Desert Club and Avenue D and Navarro. The project entails putting what we're calling desert efficient landscaping along the perimeter of, in the parkways of Avenue 52. It'll match the median as well as the area in front of the park and the fire station number 32. Then, as you move on to the sides, and on Amigo, we have the La Quinta Oasis design that will group plantings and feature more of the hardscape. So the, this project, we got bids for. This was, we went out for bids, we got four contractors to give us bids, and the lowest bidder was Golden Valley. And so our recommendation is to award to them in the amount indicated. There is a substantial savings, that's one of the good points of having reduced the, basically, the amount of DG and also the amount of plantings and so forth. And so the outcome, or what we're shooting for here is to do some comparison to the water usage and the maintenance usage on both of these plant pallets. That concludes my staff report, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, staff?
Madam Mayor, I have a potential conflict of interest, I have a roundhouse, it's up on Navarro, it's probably outside 500 feet, but as a precaution, I'll go to state notice.
Can, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
One question. I talked, again, talked to the city manager about this. In looking at the area that this covers, and the area of Navarro and going west, we're kind of doing half the block, so to speak. And so I wouldn't want this to look so different than the neighbors that that kind of puts the neighbors in a bad position there. And I understand you guys will have that, keep that in mind, that we'll, you know, as I said, we won't have a catalog next to a Ugo.
Right. Yeah, I think that the landscape architect was real sensitive to that, what we're putting in is, you know, it's a reduced maybe plant palette, but it's going to feature a lot of boulders and different colored cobble and stuff in the area right at the parkways, so I think it'll line up nicely with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Comments, sure.
Just very pleased with the cost that came in, right? There was a concern I had since the study session, it coming lower than your estimate, which is fantastic. The community has been asking for this for a while, and they've been patient and looking forward to this. And also, it is important for us, because this becomes a prototype for what we can do in the northern parkways of La Quinta. So being able to measure our water consumption, being able to measure the resistance of this pallet would be great, and it goes back to the meeting that we had some time ago. So very pleased with this and total support, and here we are saving some water that we are using a silver rock to farm.
Grow grass.
To grow grass.
Okay, with that, ask for a motion.
I will move to approve the staff recommendation.
There's a motion in second, please vote. Motion, please. Motion passes four to, with four votes, we Penya abstaining.
Absent.
Absent.
Madam Mayor, can I ask if we take a small break, just a five-minute break before we get into this next large item? I mean, if we're going to do the...
Bill?
Technical term, it's fine, he recused himself, he just abstained, he's not necessarily absent just because he's gone for the day.
All right, so we're requesting a five-minute bio-break, absolutely.
Oh, my God. Wow. That's funny.
Well, yeah, then we go up, then we go up.
Trail with his wings out looking angry, and he was actually, he was angry, they do have to make themselves bigger. He was really sick, there was something wrong with him, and I remember he might have been up. He was around lots of people, so I can stay with his clothes, and Al was just kind of like right there, I think or whatnot, but I don't know, so I'll go down here and just let him stay.
For our first study session, discuss potential projects to include in the fiscal year 2015, 16 through fiscal year 2019, 20 capital improvement program. Staff report, please.
In an effort to look at all of our processes, we are actually venturing down a new path here with the capital improvement program, in that in years past, we would normally bring this to you during study session with it broken down already into the five-year breakdown, with the projects pretty much identified and all the financing and everything worked out ahead of time. We thought that maybe it would be more informative and a better interaction if we started from the 30,000-foot elevation and took a look at this and gave you our thoughts, if you will, and give you a chance to prioritize the projects that we've identified, basically from talking to residents and also from what we've heard from the city council. So with that in mind, what we've done is we've got a list of 20 or so projects, we're going to go through them quickly, but we really are looking for you to give us feedback and, if possible, even to prioritize, and we included a cheat sheet, if you will, as an appendancy so that you could force rank the projects and hopefully get that to us so that when we return, either for another study session, or we could, if we're really productive, maybe we can make it to the public hearing after this, but that's the goal of today's study session. So with that, Ed Wimmer, Principal Engineer, is going to give the engineering projects, and then Steve Hallett with the Parks and Golf Manager is going to give the community services projects, and then we'll take questions after that, so.
Thanks, Tim. I get to serve up the first course, which is transportation, and with transportation comes funding. Next slide, please. There's four traditional funding sources, the payment management plan, which, as you recall, is the million dollars, the general fund money that you allocate every year. This is for the slurry projects and for the rehab projects, all the payment projects. The next fund is transportation development impact fees. This is the most restrictive fund, it can only be used for new projects, and it can only be used for projects that are specifically identified in the DIF report. And then there's gas tax and Measure A, these are pass-through funds, HAPs and sales tax, the pump tax, and these are very flexible funds and can be used for virtually any transportation project. Next slide, please. This is the payment management plan project that'll be the slurry project that you'll be seeing advertised this summer. It's between 1 and 1.2 million of streets that are going to be slurried in North La Quinta. And then additionally, we are going to be doing Washington between Caete Tampico and Avenue 52, also coming this summer. Next slide, please. As a quick reminder, the payment management plan is a five-year program. We engage a consultant who visits every street and does analysis of the distresses and assigns a pavement condition index. It's a number between 0 and 100, 0 being the worst street, 100 is the best street. And the entire city is cataloged and a micropaver software package is used to do a cost-benefit analysis, programming the million dollars per year over the five-year period, and coming up with the suggestions to keep a goal of 80, the PCI of 80, for the entire city network for that period of time with that million dollars per year. And so over the last year, we've had requests from various sources for the three projects that you see before you, Fred Waring, Washington to Adams, Eisenhower, Fernando to Coachella, and Monroe, 54 to 55. And it's staff's recommendation that those segments be allowed to compete with all the rest of the segments that are in the city for the dollars. And so, staff's recommendation is to allow these to go into the next five-year cycle. The next funding source, transportation DIF funding. This is one where staff is, the city's able to leverage a small amount of money for a big grant funding bang. First one is Madison between Avenue 50 and 52. This one is working with Indio to widen four lanes, put a bridge over the canal. We're leveraging 1.8 million dollars to get an 18 million dollar improvement. On Dune Palms Road, we're proposing to widen the road in concert with the bridge project to match the bridge section. That's gonna go between Black Hawk and Whitewater Channel. That one, we're leveraging 2.1 million for over 17 million. And then, the Avenue 50 discussion, as you recall, came after the study session from the September 8 storm, and that one is a 763, $763,000 investment that's going to return a 15 million dollar bridge, and that's gonna go over the evacuation channel. Next slide, please. On Measure A, first project for your consideration is the Jefferson Avenue 52 Roundabout, and that one, we've got a lot of, especially recently, we've had a lot of emails of concern about the safety of that roundabout. And so, as we were going through the design process, we originally thought we were gonna just have to address two approaches, but it turns out that in order to meet all the safety concerns, we had to look at all four of the approaches, and we're looking at narrowing from two lanes to one lane, not only on the approach, but as the speaker moment, you know, a couple hours ago was talking about, actually narrowing the inside of the roundabout to make it very clear, try to reduce the confusion of the drivers that are inside the roundabout. So, the design that we have now is considerably different, and it's, it's gonna be a modification that goes from two lanes to one lane, and hopefully will address all of the issues that you heard about at the, at the DIAS, and also for the numerous emails that we've also received. Next project is Highway 111 at La Quinta Center Drive. That one is to continue the pattern of putting dual left-turn lanes up and down the commercial corridor. This one will require modifying the median and parkway, and we think it's gonna be needed sooner rather than later, because when that movie theater gets hopping and the restaurants in that area get hopping, we might need that. The last one is Adams Corporate Center Drive. Staff's concerned about a lean budget in that, in that regard, and we're, if there is any shortfall, we're hoping there won't be, but if there is any, we're suggesting Measure A be used for that. And with that, I'll turn over the, the mic to Steve for the parks projects.
If I can, can we ask questions on this before we go to the next one? So, we can, I don't mean to...
Whatever the council's desire is.
Yeah, I have a question or two also.
All right, we also have a request to speak on this section as well, so.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we bring up our request to speak while we're on a break here? Tom Brohart, come on in. Let's see his own PMP mode. Name and address for the record, please. Good to see you again.
Sure. Nice to see you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Brohart. I'm a resident of 81905 Mountain View Lane, the estates of La Quinta. We're right on the border with the county. We see the county doing all these wonderful street projects, and we're concerned about Monroe right across our frontage and the condition that it's in. We were here about a year ago and addressed the council, and at that time, we thought, what we heard was something would happen maybe next year, which in our view was 2015, 2016. When I see the staff report, I misinterpreted what was said or didn't understand. It appears that we have to wait yet another year now, and we're gonna be given the opportunity to compete. Well, that's not really what we were led to believe, or I personally was led to believe. So, we're here to pitch improvements on Monroe again. I think several of you are very familiar with conditions. One of the things we've also suggested is that the west side of the street, the La Quinta side, really is not a place to walk safely, ride a bike safely. You look at the county side, the county runs a grader over their shoulder every month or two. It's a nice place to walk, it's a nice place to bike, and we asked for consideration by La Quinta to run a grader, even have the county run a grader over our side, to make it walkable, to make it safer. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Questions on the PMP section and transportation DIF, Measure A components?
Okay, thank you. Regarding the Monroe Street, and obviously, we got a big problem with, with a challenge, I should say, with development along Monroe Street, and what has been and what hasn't been, and the developer improvements that have and haven't occurred. I have driven down that area, and our roads are best in the valley except for that stretch of Monroe Street. I mean, we all know how bad it is, and, and I think in the past, I complained about Riverside County, their Fred Waring used to look like that years ago. But, I, I would hope that the, or the Monroe Street portion of it, you're looking at $350,000 for just that section of it alone, is that right?
That, that's correct.
And that's this area from Avenue 54 to 55, or?
It, it would basically take the number-one lane inside road, inside lane from Avenue 54 to just past the estates at La Quinta. And it's, it's based on the cost that the, that the county had, so it's the same, it's, we're looking, it would be the same improvement. And so, that really hasn't changed since last summer. I think, I think maybe that the, the part of confusion is, is that, you know, we, we were hoping to have the, the Washington Street bid out by this time. There's been some, it's, it's a federally funded project, and so, it's been delayed in the, in the processing with the feds, and so, we don't have those numbers in yet. So, that's why we don't know if we have any savings, and we won't for several months. And then, and then, of course, the rest of the PMP for this five-year cycle is obligated to North La Quinta, so really, the situation hasn't really changed to say that we have any savings to work on this in the current PMP.
But, to, to put it in the 15, '16 budget, would we have the 350,000? Where'd that, where would that 350,000 come from in the 15, '16 budget?
It would have to come, if there was savings, which, you know, is a big if at this point, from the Washington portion of the overlay that we're going to do this summer, that might, there might be savings there, or the only other, not, the other thing that we're proposing, that if you want to advance this project, then, you know, a general fund could be added to, to get this road done ahead of the other ones in the, in the pavement management plan.
So, I have a question. If we do the 350 and do the asphalt as the temporary remedy to equal what the county has done, what does the variation on the shoulder look like based on all the dirt that's been moved out over there with the Griffin estate area, I think, right? I guess closer to 54.
Right, well, yeah, we'd have to, I, I'm not sure, I, I know that we've been out there at least once and fixed, and fixed the shoulder in, in this fall. I, I'm not sure what, you know, if, if the developer's been out, back out there and done more work, or if maybe there was more erosion from, you know, wind or whatever, but we would, we could fix the shoulder while we're doing the, or have the contractor while he's doing the, the work to the road. We could have the shoulder dressed up again as part of the project.
You're talking about the shoulder just south of 54?
I think, yeah, I, I believe where Mr. Brohart is talking about is that, is the shoulder on our side is not walkable as compared to on the county side.
They are not created.
And it has, well, it's, it's, it's fairly flat, from what I'm recalling, in, in parts.
Well, I think many of us have separately perhaps driven that road in the last month or two.
Oh, I have.
There's a lot of, a lot more potholes than there were before the September 8 storm. There's a lot of variation in elevations on that loose dirt. Kristy?
Yes. A couple of things come to mind here. We have the Griffin Ranch, that property is, that 40 acres that we're looking at right here, is potentially being developed pretty soon.
Yeah, we, we...
Go ahead.
No, no definite timeframe on that.
Exactly. Well, is there?
Right.
And to the south of that, that project is also under consideration, or wherever it is right now. So, my question is, if we went ahead and did these street improvements, could we then, when the developer does do something, be reimbursed? I don't like to do things halfway. I think spending this money, and when we know this project is coming forward, it just, that's just throwing money down the drain.
I think Bill has some comments on that.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Franklin. The concern is with crossing the line of not meeting your nexus or direct, whenever you impose an exaction or dedication requirement, for instance, on a tentative track map, it's because it's related to those direct impacts. And if the city were to not have in place either some kind of landscape and lighting district that had gone through the process of establishing what those impacts are, so that there is a nexus established as to what the costs should be that would eventually be reimbursed, you run the risk of potentially having a, a special tax that would have to be approved by the voters, or, yeah. And there's actually case law out there on this, where this reimbursement approach as, seems kind of commonsensical, can be implemented, it, it cannot be implemented without following the constitutional requirements that apply under basically Prop 218 and Prop 26, when you're dealing taxes and fees.
Okay.
So, it's, it's more complicated than it may sound, I guess, is the short end.
The estates at La Quinta, we, were those put in prior to our requiring the developer to do the road? So, that, that has to be done at one point in time by us, just like the Polo grounds on Avenue 52?
It's, it's, it's an older development that, as I understand it, alls they did was widen, they did expand it to two lanes in front of their development. The difference is, is that they did not go out to the middle of the road, if you will. They, they just basically tacked on to what the county had out there. And, and so, it doesn't meet what we call the urban design standards, where we, where we recreate the cross slope in the, in the, in the street and get the curbing gutter to flow, so that the water actually goes in a direction towards retention basins and so forth. That, that hasn't been done in front of the estates, and that's part of the reason why they've, they've got some drainage issues and stuff like that at that location. Eventually, that will have to be done.
So, if we, excuse me, if we did do what we, what you're planning with the 350 here, we still have that piece between Avenue 60, 60 and 62 on the west side that is not done, where all the palm trees are that are falling over, and the county is requiring them now to get rid of?
That's, that's correct. That section is not part of the...
And so, it seems kind of odd to be doing this and not be doing that, too. And then, wouldn't we have it all the way, pretty much?
Well, yes, because, as she's mentioned, the Norman Course to the south of this connects down to 60, and then you have a portion done in front of Trilogy, but you're right, you're missing that end piece still on the west side.
And again, there's some rumbling about that being developed, but again...
Which would be part of their responsibility.
It would be, but it's just like these. I mean, we've got rumbling here, too.
But, right now, we've got a high commuter component where that's, that's the route to get to existing destinations and potentially a pothole dodging mechanism on a very fast road at, at night that's not very well lit, just by design. So, I mean, you know, I, I'd like to propose pulling this effort for general fund and making it happen sooner rather than putting it into the next year, just taking, at the 350 level, not the...
What would it cost to finish out that strip? Do you have any, I'm just ballpark-ish?
1.5 million. Yeah, no, no. There's, that's...
Between 60 and 62.
That's a much shorter stretch, if I'm recalling. I, you know, it, we'd have to go get the square footage and give you a cost estimate for that.
How deteriorated is that portion between 60 and 60 second? It's terrible.
It's awful. It's the worst.
Yeah.
But, you don't get as much traffic on, on that one?
Because they're turning on the 58 and 60.
And that was kind of on the first slide, if you notice, we put the relative average daily traffic on, to kind of give you an idea of, and I'm certainly, certainly south of Avenue 60, you're not gonna see as much traffic, but there are still people from Trilogy that, that, yeah, that come out that way.
Right.
At, at one time, the county is gonna make Avenue 62 a thoroughfare, and I imagine that's all been shelved for some unknown point in the future.
I, you know, Les would probably know better than I do, but I don't know that that ever got formally adopted into their general plan for the county or not, but, you know, our traffic model still relies on that, assuming that they're going to sort of redevelop that, so. If I may...
Can I make a statement, please? Can I speak for one second?
If you would like to, Deb, if you would like to make a comment, please come onto the podium and give your name and address for the record.
I'll make it real fast, okay. I live in Trilogy, oh, Dev, Eric, 60933, Arville Drive, La Quinta, California. I live in Trilogy, and Tom contacted me last year, and I, I don't take that road, because it's so hideous, it's so dangerous, yet all of my family, and I have five kids, when they put it in their GPS, it tells them to get off and go down the road to come to Trilogy. And I go, "Don't do that, because it's ugly." So, I have them come down Madison to come down Trilogy, and I am speaking for most of the residents, there's 2,500 of us, that tell our family, "Don't come down Monroe." And that stretch that, where Tom lives, "Please take a drive over there, it is so dangerous. People can't walk, they can't ride their bikes." Not just that it looks bad, but you have half the road done by the county, and the other half, which is ours, is such a bad reflection. And so, I really would hope that you take it into your budget to do something for the people that live there, and also for those of us that still have to take Monroe to get to Trilogy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam.
If I may, Madam Mayor, when you drive down this stretch, there's really not an option. If you are going to Trilogy, you make a right on 60, you can enter on 60. So, the piece from 60 to 62, I don't think he has a level of priority as this portion over here, although, and I will drive back again, I take your word for it, is awful.
It's bad.
Okay. Again, if it was only the esthetical component, but it's safety, and if you drive down when it's wet, which I did, it's not pleasant, I have to be honest, and I do like to drive on wet pavement. So, no, I do. But, this one is a little bit difficult, so I understand Mayor Proten frankly said, "If we do it, we do it right," right? And, and that's, that's always, obviously, the, the great option. And, and there are also many projects here, it's really difficult. I mean, you give us a task here to rank a project. I don't know if I overthought the whole process, but it took me a long time to do it, right? Because there's a lot of importance here in this project. But, at some point, when you have, the asphalt is collapsed, you have, you know, a serious issue, I mean, it's visible, it's a safety issue, it's aesthetic, they're all, it's all listing. I think we have to look at this.
Well, and when you look at this restriping of the circle, quote, roundabout at 367,000 versus making this road, it's a no-brainer, in my opinion.
And if anybody cares, that's number one, and Monroe is number two on my ranking, so.
Okay, so, could I saw this, not on this one, but I have another question.
Okay, well, let's talk about this one as a pull-up for a potential look sooner rather than moving forward.
I, I would tend to agree. I, you know, all you have to do is take a drive down there, and I think that even if we have some savings on Washington Street, even if we defer a couple of projects there, we're gonna save the money and we do it.
So, it sounds like we have consensus to bring this back as a business item, to consider funding now as opposed to waiting for CIP in years to come, correct? We agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're just, so, we're clear, just a segment that we've identified, so, between fifty-four and the south southerly limits of the estate.
Fifty-four Airport, I guess it is, basically, right?
Well, fifty-five.
Yeah. That's much better.
Yes, all right. So, Kristy, on other items, then.
Yes. So, in terms of the roundabout, again, that's another area that I drive frequently. And it was just very poorly constructed when you have two cars coming up. And actually, I know how to drive a roundabout, but it's still, it's not me, I don't understand.
Yeah, because there's others that think it is two lanes, and all of a sudden, you've got someone right next to it.
Yes, and they just zoom. So, if we just put this down to one lane on the approach, why do we then need to narrow the inside and spend the money on that? If you've only got one, if only one car can go through, I think you solved your problem. And we could take that extra money and put it on Monroe Street.
I think, I'll ask our traffic engineer to answer that question.
That's fair. You're going to be Alex Godfrey. Well, that's what he said. He was going to narrow this. But these have to be one-lane.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Nazir Lallani, the City Traffic Engineer, actually, most of the work is going to be on the approaches. The dominant, I did a collision listing, we've had a hundred and three collisions there in the, since the database started in two thousand and three, I would say seventy to eighty percent of the collisions are people who have sideswipes because of the problem that you just described, or they run smack into the roundabout. I'm hoping that the Road Runner will elevate the profile of the roundabout.
Slow them down.
I don't want to hit the Road Runner. That's what they do, and even during the middle of the day. So, the major part of the design really is to deflect the vehicles as they come into the roundabout and slow them down. The narrowing of the roundabout is very subtle. It just makes it a little bit more clear that this is a one-lane roundabout, and people shouldn't be trying to go into it, but you also need to handle the trucks. And so, we've got it narrowed down to make it as narrow as possible, but still accommodate trucks. But it really is, the approaches where most of the cost of the work is, because we're really making the traffic swing out and swing, swing in and out, basically, to get them to slow down to the entry speed, which is supposed to be around nineteen miles per hour, and they're actually going in at about thirty. And we're putting in signings to get people to slow down before they ever get there, and some advisory signs in the back. So, there's a lot of work. The actual changes within the roundabout is fairly minor, but it's just to kind of make it all smooth, make it work like a single-lane roundabout.
I don't know. I mean, there's some twenty-two signs just to get to the approach, it seems like, from any direction, to mark it as single lane and put little slowdown bumps without a massive amount of restriping. I don't know. What if you, what if you marqueeed it as a single lane, single lane only, one lane only?
They don't-
You don't think they're driving into it?
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm seeing my common sense, you could just put the yellow lines there as you go away to make it one lane.
Our narrowing speed scape, like Leo.
We've had a lot of, this roundabout was, I totally agree with you, was done before I came to the city. I would never have agreed to it. The design is terrible. We have a roundabout expert in Arizona who's done hundreds and thousands of roundabout property, and he's very clear that in order to solve this running into the roundabout problem and to get the sideswipe problem and be able to accommodate trucks properly, we thought about doing it. We just thought about narrowing it, you know, and this design said, trucks, you have to kind of give away to the other traffic. And ultimately, he said, "It really isn't supported by the traffic manuals in California." And to really solve the problem, this is what he recommended, and we've run it by a number of different people, they are in agreement. This is really, if you're going to solve it, this is the proper way to do it. So, we reluctantly come to this conclusion, because originally, we weren't even going to do Avenue fifty-two, if you recall, and the mayor was not happy about doing Jefferson.
The former mayor.
Ultimately, the former mayor, sorry, that she clarified that. Ultimately, when we looked at it to really solve the crash problem, got out there, the recommendation from the designer was to do all four, and, and to change the center of roundabout itself.
Okay.
Hey, let's get back to Sue's question.
John first.
Yeah, is there a question?
Is there?
And getting back to the crash problems, although there's a number of crashes out there, they're not severe, they're not major crashes, a lot of sideswipes, things like that, but not major impact crashes.
You're totally correct on that, but it's one of the saving graces of the roundabout, is that I think out of the hundred collisions, probably less than ten have involved injury. But it's just that we've had this steady-
Striper error in ten years now.
Yeah. It's basically, they're driving too fast into it, because I drive it just about every day, and you see people just driving way too fast in there. And you throw a bike or pedestrian in there, they totally don't know what to do.
Right, that's true.
That's true. Maybe that's what we need to do, decoy pedestrians.
Just a quick question in regard, so if speed is the issue during approach, can anything be done on the pavement in a sort of, you know, bumps?
Speed bumps, rating.
No speed bumps, I didn't want to use that word, of course. Anything that can be done so that as you approach, you feel that-
Like off-ramps on the fifteen, go into the Vegas, you just get the-
Bumpy.
Yeah, strip rating.
Yeah, we call them rumble strips.
Rumble strips, thank you, Nazir.
That could be done. However, again, our designer said that might work on a short-term basis, but people will kind of get used to them. He's adamant that to get the slowing effect, you need to deflect the traffic. That's really what this design, if you could see it a lot more detail on your photo, I mean, it's, it's fairly complicated, but he's pretty adamant that in order to slow them down, you've got to make them wiggle, basically screw this chicane type of fact, and then you get them to go at the correct entry speed.
So, it looks like we're not going to be able to argue the, yeah, we're not going to be able to argue the amount, so it's still part of our priority list. So, I would say, knowing that we're supposed to rank these things, let's continue on.
And measure A money, you know, it's not general fund money, this is measure A money. So, we've got the buns to do it outside the general fund.
Yes.
Should we start with that, Tim?
If I may, one other aspect is, we have a lot of internal debates, and I have a lot of internal debates with Tim on these things. And one of the points that they're not talking about, and I'll try to say it cryptically, if it's not designed right and there's an accident, and a good attorney can say, "The city is totally liable because of bad design, and we have no recourse." So, part of the point of belting and suspending some of these things, because we have this debate over signs a lot, is the aspect of if that occurs, then everybody's going to be saying, "Well, jeez, why didn't you do it right? We're getting sued." So, we're trying to figure out a balance on how to not make it look like we're going wild, putting stripes everywhere and signs everywhere, but at the same time, balance it against liability. It's not fun, but it's the reality.
All right, let's continue.
One other question on that group of items. On the Madison Street, Avenue fifty, Avenue fifty-two, and, and you're talking about taking that from two lanes to four lanes.
That, that's the ultimate configuration, yes.
Now, from a funding standpoint, I know Golden Voice has helped road funding issues for Indio. Have we approached them on this? Because this is either their or the Polo folks to help in the cost and make this change.
We have not approached Golden Voice specifically on this. Skip Page, though, has been involved in a number of projects that affected La Quinta. The most recent one is that they paved part of Avenue fifty-two between Madison and Polo Estates and the old Polo Estates, and now he's working with the Polo Estates Group, which he owns property in there as well, to widen the rest of Avenue fifty-two. So, even, and, and so, it's, while we, and they did pay for the widening in front of the Ralphs on Fiftieth a few years ago, and, and so, so there, there has been help from Golden Voice, I guess, is my, my point.
I mean, this is direct, I mean, do they own that property along the east side of that street?
They own parts of, they bought the Empire Polo Field, is the way I understand it.
And El Dorado.
El Dorado, I'm sorry.
I don't know if they own or don't own there.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Allison. But, and, and they're actually, in one of the design scenarios, there might be some acquisition on that part of, of the, of the street if we have to move the center line for some other reasons. But, and Golden Voice, you know, has already said that they would accommodate us. So, we're, we're working with them on both sides of the street, I would say.
Okay, so the cost won't be totally ours?
Well, now, now, to be clear, what we've, what we've said is, is that that one point eight million dollars is the commitment that, that La Quinta has made for all three phases of the project. And we've completed Phase One, which widened it from a two-lane road to what it is now with the middle turn lane and some of the intersection improvements. The, the next two improvements, though, are to widen the bridge up at Avenue fifty, and, and then to, and then to ultimately, and then that'll allow us to widen it to five lanes essentially, four, four travel lanes and a middle turning lane as the ultimate configuration. But that is the city's commitment to, and Nick can quote the amount of, that the total project cost, but that's La Quinta's portion of it.
It's an eighteen million dollar investment, which we're paying one point eight million.
Okay. So, then lastly, before we move on to parks, I've got to bring up the Highway one eleven at La Quinta Center, dual left turn lanes. So, that has to be another six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. That's got to be the longest approach to go into that target center than many of our left turn. I mean, you can do it from almost Adams Street, basically, you can get through there. I just, I say until the, I, I just don't think we need a double turn lane there. Because what are you going to do with the space that, once they turn? Because it's not a clear two lane there, and there's clear curb definition.
So, we would be restriping that piece to two lanes. Here's the issue. The synchronization of Highway one eleven is based on certain cycle lengths that we share with Indian Wells, and it also, we share it with Washington. It runs a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty seconds. I can only give that movement about twenty seconds of green time in order to be able to serve all the other movements, and we have to allow for pedestrians crossing the street. So, even though the pocket is very long, I wouldn't be able to give it enough green time to process the vehicles. So, what will happen is, we either back up one eleven traffic going eastbound, or we give it all the green time and allow the traffic to turn. I can't do both within the mathematical constraints that I have. So, that's the problem. The pocket's nice and long, it's just that people, we just keep stacking up and stacking up, because we don't be able to process about ten to twelve vehicles a cycle. And so, that's the reason that we have to go to the dual left, and it's pretty much what's been happening along the whole one eleven corridor with the, with the movie theater and the restaurants and everything else coming into the mix now. The projections are much higher for those turning movements.
So, was that the same rationale for the double left into the Walmart Center when it was originally developed?
Yes.
Because in the beginning, it was very busy. There doesn't seem to be a massive amount of dual left turn backup anymore, or even single backup from there.
Yeah, because we process the vehicles fairly efficiently. In fact, we did, if you remember, the, the, coming out of the Best Buy Shopping Center, it was a single left, you used to back up all the way to Wal-Mart, and we did the double left. It's because I can only give certain amount of green time to each movement, and there's only a hundred and twenty seconds, a hundred and thirty, you've got to fit in the yellows, and I've got to fit in the pads, so it's tough. It's really difficult. So, that's the reason for the, for the dual left, is if we don't do it, it'll eventually back up traffic into the through lanes, or it will, once the window theater and everything else gets going back there.
So, when directions are being given to the theater, are they going to be given to go down that street, or are they going to be given to come down Forty-seventh?
I, I can't answer. We can only-
That's a long left turn light by the church.
Right.
And it's very low.
I think a lot will come down, obviously, come down Washington. We're concerned, frankly, about the turn pocket just south of Simon. If that's going to be long enough, we're going to have to really watch that closely, because it's, it's under two hundred and fifty feet long. And, but, we think that locals and people coming from the east will use this as a way to get down to the movie theater, yes.
Yeah, I'd be more concerned about the double turn lane into the In-N-Out Burger versus the turn center.
Well, that's good that you brought that up, because we're concerned as well.
All right, move on to parks.
Speaking of verbs, that's cool.
Yeah.
That was measure A project.
Thank you. Still a lot.
Okay, thank you. For the parks projects, the first one obviously was written before the governor's mandate, so the adding turf onto the wellsite at La Quinta Park, we'd probably just move that for further discussion from, for council.
So, you always push I on the list.
The next one is the Cove Trailhead improvements. This was brought to us because we continuously get comments from residents who live at the top of the Cove, who are telling us about the increased activity. It's not only becoming popular valley-wide, but we're also getting a lot of usage from people staying at the La Quinta Resort and the Embassy Suites. Once they get up there, they're parking street-side, and they're not really sure where to go because of the topography of the landscape. You can't see the Cove Oasis. There's no sign saying Bear Creek Trail. So, this project was brought forward, worked with a local landscape architect to provide an entry point. Currently, Tocatia Madero, the entry that's there, looks like two maintenance roads. This would increase it, so it's a little more visual, that it's a place that groups for hikes can meet and move on from there. Also, from the road, you'll be able to see signs that would say Bear Creek Trail and Cove Oasis Trails. The next item would be the Jefferson Street, Avenue fifty-two roundabout to install a pedestal for the art piece. The Road Runner's currently there, but it's sitting on the dirt. For forty thousand dollars, we would install a pedestal, and then the remaining budget would be for landscaping and safety. Next item, staff-
We had signage in there somehow? Signage. We'll get to that.
Okay, yeah. What about lighting?
Some kind of marquee.
The, the lighting should be here, hopefully, before Friday. We're working closely with the- The next item, staff highly recommends the playground equipment replacement. This is scheduled replacement. The average lifespan for playground equipment is fifteen years. This has reached its useful life. We can stretch these out over the period of four years, maybe one playground per year, but this is an item that we'd like to move forward on, because all four of these playgrounds are the oldest in the city. Moving on to the next slide. Park facility security, this is another one that staff highly recommends. We worked with a local consultant on this. Currently, we have outdated surveillance systems at La Quinta Park and Fritz Burns Park. Any incidents that occur out there, the surveillance system is not any help. We also have surveillance systems at the New Wellness Center, the library, the museum. This would update those systems, pull it into a central area. The idea is to bring all the recordings down to a location, possibly the EOC, where all, all this is accessible and recorded from the EOC. But also, with the new technology that's out there, not only do we get a higher resolution picture, but it becomes mobile-friendly for mobile devices. We've worked with Lieutenant Walton on, on this, specifically for City Hall, but the law enforcement officers would be able to pull up any one of our facilities and look at it in real time, what's going on at La Quinta Park, what's going on at Fritz Burns Park. We could also put a link on our city's website, so parents could go on and see what's going on at La Quinta Park or Fritz Burns Park, or even up at the Cove Oasis.
And so, that also then would include signage saying that this is under surveillance and that can be viewed from any place anywhere. Don't you have to post something when you've got cameras that are accessible via web-
Yes. And we do have those signs at La Quinta Park as well, yes. Just, they've, they've been there for so long that no one notices them anymore, so. Then we also have the La Quinta Skate Park. Our current park, we're, we're pretty landlocked on that location. We got the CBWD wellsite on one side and the basketball courts on the other. So, we also have outdated metal ramps that have been damaged over, over the years. And so, we met with a skate company that makes prefabricated concrete structures that we could install in the facility, and also renovate the fencing that's around there. So, look at new options to keep that area fenced off. Next item would be the emergency backup system here at City Hall. This system is twenty years old. Found out from our contractor recently that they stopped making replacement parts for that six years ago. So, this isn't an urgent need, but it's something that we need to take care of before it becomes a problem. Then we go into the next item, which is the Fritz Burns Pool. These are items that need more direction. The Fritz Burns Pool expansion was approved back in two thousand and thirteen for one point three two million dollars. The project wasn't moved forward because of the economic conditions and the drastic cuts that the city was having to make and the concerns that were associated with that. The pool primarily is used for swim, swim lessons and water aerobics to serve these citywide activities. activities. The idea was to install interactive water feature, slide, shade structures, restrooms to further enhance the facility and also collect rental fees, again, to serve citywide. If the city council would like, we could not move forward on that and just maintain the facility as is and make the needed repairs with equipment repair funds and use that $1.32 million elsewhere, or we can move forward with that project. Next project would be the Fritz Burns Skate Park. The Fritz Burns Skate Park is the facility that's in worst condition of all of our facilities. Like La Quinta Skate Park, it too needs to be upgraded, but we have another component of, we get a lot of residential, residents complaining that we don't have enough citywide tennis facilities, and they would like to see that expanded. The current skate park sits on the former tennis courts of the Desert Club. Those were originally tennis courts, and so we have a lot of people who would like to see those returned to tennis and pickleball, and then move the skate park elsewhere.
Good question.
Yes.
What's pickleball?
Pickleball is becoming very popular. It's very similar to tennis in that it is played on a smaller court with paddles instead of rackets and a ball that has less velocity.
Play big pen palaces?
Yeah, it's tennis on a reduced court that doesn't require as much physical exertion to play, and it's very popular.
Ask the park or house, there's lots of pickleball.
So one of the current designs we're looking at is if we were to convert the two former tennis courts that are now a skate, the skate park, back into tennis. One court could be fully tennis and the other court could be two pickleball courts or a tennis court. So it's a little flexible on what the options are. But again, then we'd need to decide, do we want to just renovate our existing skate parks, or do we want to build a new skate park? And this goes into a comment that Councilmember Osborne brought to our attention, that he would like us to investigate building a new skate park somewhere in the city that would be comparable, if not better, than other skate parks, perhaps have it staffed. So staff did research that. We found that a 12,000 square foot facility would cost us about $500,000 to construct. The better sized facility would be about 20,000 square feet, and that would cost about a million dollars. That would be on existing land that we already have, so if we were to put it on other property, we'd need to acquire that land. Additionally, if we want to staff that facility, we would need to pay the extra cost for a facility for a pro shop, skate shop, and also restrooms. And then another consideration would be the operations, either outsourcing through a private company, which we've had discussions with, or outsourcing through the Desert Recreation District, who currently takes care of some other skate parks in our valley.
What are the size of our skate parks now?
Size of our skate parks now would be about 12,000 to 15,000 square feet.
And the one that costs half a million?
The one that costs, the one that costs half a million would be a 12,000 square foot.
Is that the size of the one up in La Quinta Park?
It's very comparable to the one at La Quinta Park, yes. But it has more amenities to it. I think I have a slide here. That's the La Quinta Park. I don't have a picture of the 12,000 square foot facility as proposed, but the improvements at La Quinta Park are this slide that I'm showing you right now, $50,000. Those extra ramps and center structures are prefabricated concrete that they would cut in and replace the existing metal concrete, I mean, metal structures.
We currently don't have any of this, I'm not really sure about the name, but internal slide or underground slide, or like we're showing right there?
We do have the bowl that's on the right side of the screen.
Yeah, and if I can, that bowl was, I mean, that whole facility was built, I want to say at least 10 years ago, maybe longer, 15 years ago. And it's needed refurbished for quite a long time. I remember when we first approved this, because I spent many hours in Palm Desert and that part of the lot as well with my kids at their skate park. And when we originally talked about this for La Quinta, we, you know, discussed the legal aspects of it and having someone there all the time as Palm Desert does. And so we tried to make it a little bit smaller, obviously, but open. And the fence around it hopefully would protect just the skaters with skateboard. Unfortunately, those, the kids with bicycles found ways in and out of it, whether through the gate or over the gate, or removed the fence entirely and made their own gate. But the challenge too is that it's not just skateboarders anymore. There's also the scooter kids with their scooters. And theirs don't as much use the bowl as much as just ramps, doing the flips and whatnot on theirs. And so I don't know, on this one, the north edge has that grass right there. Would you be able to increase the size with that grass that's right there?
Is that the CBWD?
No. The north edge of the grass there, that's actually still within the fenced area of the skate park. I think that there's a little area on the north inside the skate park and also on the west. I believe the original intention was just to provide a grass area for the kids to sit and relax, but it's trampled so hard, it's more dirt now than anything. So there is a little bit of wiggle room to put some more amenities in that space as well.
And I was going to, you know, you brought it up earlier on that CBWD, so you obviously can't do grass anymore with the changes. But I would hope we would have some kind of gravel it or something to it. I mean, if that was somebody's own yard, we'd have code complaints over there in a heartbeat, telling them to clean it up. And it looks, well, you guys know what it looks like, I don't need to tell you that. But I hope we could do something with it. Now, given that it belongs to the CBWD and it's their call for usage, I don't know to the extent that if we were to put some cement on it, would it have to be something that would be thin enough to be able to remove easy enough if we ever had to with the water district?
We ran in, we dealt with this when we installed the dog park at Pioneer, because the Pioneer Dog Park, the large dog section is actually in the retention, in the well site for that property. CBWD allowed minimal concrete in there, so the three shade structures and the sidewalk was the maximum amount of concrete we could put in there, with the understanding that we pay a dollar a year for that property and that at any time CBWD can exercise their right to install a well there and we lose a dog park.
They're going to have their own challenges with the premiums there.
So, but we do have, this is fairly, but based on the numbers we've got for the landscape project here on Avenue 52, we're looking at about $6 a square foot to do desert landscaping or desert efficient landscaping.
So you do have a plan to clean up that piece?
We don't have a plan at the moment, but it's something that we can work on. If we're looking at 10,000 square feet, that's $6,000. So the cost is going to substantially jump.
Well, if you have 16,000 for grass, it's got to be less than that to just put gravel or something on it.
Gravel would most likely be cheaper, yeah. But if you want to do something a little more formal with some desert landscaping, it would cost more.
And if I also may weigh in on the skate park, we looked at a couple of different options. Initially, when we were looking at the larger skate park, our approach was, okay, where do we own property so we don't have to buy property? And the biggest piece we have that's not designated for housing, well, there's two. There's one being the Paisley piece, as the staff calls it, which is at 52, and I can't remember the cross streets, but it's adjoining Fritz Burns Park on the north side of Avenue 52. Another piece, Les will go out of his chair on this, that we looked at is the property that we own at Navarro on Montezuma on the south end of La Quinta Community Park between the museum, which is currently being used as a staging area for the gas station revamp, the Tower Mark revamp. Then the third side we looked at, if we were willing to reimburse the housing fund for the cost of the land, would be at Dune Palms in Westford Hope, because we do have that property across from the high school. So there are options there, and in looking at other available funds, one thing that we have been carrying over in our capital improvement budget for a number of years is $3.1 million that was designated at one time in many discussions that we all had to buy 40 acres plus someplace to the east for a park or the southeast. That's still floating in there, and it's not designated for anything at this point in time.
And that project area is specific?
No.
Okay.
Couldn't we partner with Recreation District somewhere? We have talked with a whole group of people as late of two weeks ago, where we had a meeting with the county, the Park and Recs District, and the City of Indio, to try to see what type of partnership opportunities there are. And the City of Indio said that basically, per their goals and objectives, their focus is on territory north of I-10, because they need parks up there. In talking with the county, they said their focus at this point in time is on Bermuda Dunes and the facilities that they have there, I think around Avenue 42 or thereabouts. And Desert Rec is still going through the process of updating their master plan, and they said at the near term, they're looking to partner with the county for the facility in Bermuda Dunes, and then going forward, it's anyone's guess. They basically concluded the meeting that said, basically, for areas outside of North Indio, if the City of La Quinta wants to build it, they'll be more than happy to work with us. So yes, we have tried those avenues.
Well, I mean, I, you know, as far as, do you want to go over the last one in terms of the Dunbar traffic signal, and then we can comment on some of the directional needed piece?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. The last one is Jefferson-Dunbar traffic signal. We have Esplanade on our side, we have Heritage Palms on the other side. We have developer bond funding and Measure A funds available for our half of the signal, but unfortunately, the City of Indio does not have the $215,000 that's needed to fund their half of the signal, so we're looking for council direction on what to do on that one.
They didn't have it, and then they had it, and now they don't have it again, because at some point, my understanding was they had communicated that they were going to allocate funding for that, recognizing the potential development of North Gate with the Chani Group and the Jefferson interchange component.
The last time I discussed it with my counterpart, Grant Eklund in Indio, and he's no longer there, was that they were going to put it in their CIP. That's as far as I know that it got. But it wasn't a funded project, and so, you know, they still have a challenge funding it, and we still get a lot of requests. And now, you know, with the interchange underway, we're really concerned that we're going to have a problem. Either we need to basically close off the median or come up with a way to fund a traffic signal there.
So Bill, back to the, can we pay for it and someone pays us back component? How would we work $215,000 advance of such with Indio in some type of repayment format?
Well, you can always negotiate an agreement. The question then, would that would be different than having a property owner pay for something that isn't necessarily connected to the impact that we're attributing to that property owner? But if you negotiate an agreement, which would be between the two cities on, you know, front money, you pay us back, come up with terms, it's pretty much a negotiable, just any sort of negotiation.
And is it possible that if there's $215,000 here, and we've got joint projects down in Madison that encompass the festival areas, that we pay and take care of the signal, and somewhere down the line on some of that areas, they're taking care of $215,000 with our portion that's kind of on a shared road basis?
That's a great, great concept. I'm not sure that I could, yeah, I could propose that to, at least on the staff level. I don't think that they would be able to commit to something like that, so.
I'm up to talking with them to establish some safety grounds on Jefferson.
Is that a coalition talk, man?
Yeah.
There you go.
That's really, it's a necessary traffic signal. That's just really a problem area for developments all around. It's just, we need to be able to break up people as they approach miles down the road to the roundabout that will become a single lane. Okay, comments on the more direction needed? Because I do, I do have a few, but we'll start with the groups. And we've shared some. Do you want to continue?
Well, the Fritz Burns Pool, you guys have voiced my concerns numerous times regarding the lack of community service assets north of Highway 111. And if we take the $1.3 million on that pool, I imagine that's coming out of Quimby funds? Those are limited funds. I mean, with the reduction in development for the city of La Quinta, our Quimby funds are going to be extremely restricted, and I would be extremely concerned to continue to use these Quimby funds for assets in this Cove area and leave out North La Quinta. I really wish that North La Quinta had a Cove Association. The Cove Association here has done amazing things and improvements in this area, whether it's art or entrance or trails or whatever it may be. But unfortunately, there's no such entity for North La Quinta. So my big concern is that if we're going to look at a skate park, and if we're going to, I mean, if we're going to remove the one down here in the Cove area, and it's got a ramp on it and that's about it, I mean, the pavement's pretty bad, but if we're going to create a real usable, larger skate park in North La Quinta, something equivalent to Palm Desert, we're going to need a million dollars of Quimby funds, that's for sure, or more. And if we continue to use them here in the Cove area, there won't be anything left for North La Quinta. And I'll hear, yes, we'd love to do that, but it's got to come out of reserves. And nobody wants to spend reserves, which I'm one of those. So I would hate to have the alternative at some point in the future say, yes, we'd love to spend a million dollars to improve this facility if you guys want to take it out of reserve. And that's going to be a much, much difficult, tougher discussion versus use of Quimby funds for parks. And we need something for these kids. We desperately need something for these kids, given we have a small group, giving us a challenge there in the park. There's 10 times more that need these facilities. And it was great to have that come in when we built it 10-plus years ago, and, but the facility in Palm Desert is a great facility. And I don't know the cost of that in regards to having an individual there and any fees that they charge, because I used to pay a fee to have my kids there. And so it would behoove us tremendously to provide something of that sort in that area. But I don't know how big we need versus how big we have. These other spots you've mentioned, Frank, are all here in the Cove, if I-
Except for Dune Palm and Westford Hope.
Dune Palm, given the challenge there is the cost of the land. How are we going to reimburse the housing for that land? I mean, that's a pretty big number. And again, that would probably have to come from reserves. I don't know that that could come from Quimby funds. So I'm concerned about facilities, and I'm concerned about the funds being used for those facilities. And then another discussion I wanted to have, ask about is our trails on what's called CB Link. I mean, our trails, we've already got the infrastructure there on the north and south side of them. I should, infrastructure. I mean, we've got the land right there, and we've got the bridges designed accordingly. I don't know if this council would be, you know, to look at that, not necessarily put them in paved with all the bells and whistles that Seabag has in mind. I don't think that we can afford the bells and whistles that Seabag has in mind unless we can get some funding from them. As we do the roads and the bridges, will they help fund our trails with the CB Link funds that they already have? I don't know.
Are you talking about construction or maintenance? Because maintenance is one of the five expenses.
Well, that's in the sense of construction. My mind is, you know, let's just put DG down, put a small fence along the edge, and call it a day. We don't need shade structures or water structures or recharging for electric cars. It's simple for walking and running and biking, and that's it. I mean, there's a lot of people jogging in North La Quinta on the street. And it's a really bad, I mean, well, one gentleman was jogging right in front of my car, and I had a green light to go, but, you know, luckily I saw him running across the red. But it's a real problem, you know, from a safety standpoint. Anybody that jogs, jogs on the street for whatever reason.
So let's-
But anyway, back to this, on the concern of more direction needed, I would ask that we wait on the pool, but we do something on, the Fritz Burns Park, skate park, the pickleball or whatever, I'll leave that to you guys, whether the needs are. But if we're going to take away that ramp, that one ramp we have over there for the kids and the skateboard, then let's do something of measurable amount in the skate park we have at La Quinta Park. And something more than just new ramps, we're going to need, like, to pave that other area of grass and make it a bigger park. And include something for those kids on scooters as well as skateboards. Scooters is a new thing, and it's growing in a big, big way. Scooters is a new thing and it's growing in a big, big way. And many parents are paying for their kids to go to camps or go to special parks they have throughout the state.
Robert?
Yeah, if I may say, I totally agree that if the skateboard park is taken away, then we really need to look at Northern 111 to, you know, spurge up the one that we have. I also think that we also need to look at the fact that we are a city and we happen to have several amenities and facilities. And how we encourage our citizens, our kids, to use those facilities to bridge that two-mile gap, that is really something that we have to look at instead of looking at the while in this, in this area versus that area. Because I imagine that the pool was built because the land was available and there were reason to build it at the time back when.
No, we were given money to do that.
Yes.
The PJ was.
But there was, there was land, there was, exactly. So how we, do we provide some sort of transportation? At some point, you had mentioned that someone was looking at a route, that maybe we don't have the proper route to get people around town. So, the facilities are, but the facilities are. So if we now take away the skate park, then we need to find a way to get kids from, from the southern area up Northern 111, right? And we need to get that through, actually. And that CB Link actually is all about connecting kids, right? There's quite a bit of that. And if we can connect our youth and get them to play together and visit each other, that's what the community is all about. So that's, that's my comment. I really like to see something done at the pool, honestly. The, when you look at Palm Desert, Devon Aquatic Center, and I never heard anyone in Palm Desert say, well, it's north of the Fritz-Burn or the, or the Freeware. I never heard that. They all enjoy it. Many people from La Quinta travel over there. When we have events there, we swing the wind, you know, I did the statistic for that event and La Quinta was number two of visitors there for that event. So we invite us to look at the possibility of doing something like that for the entire community, you know, whatever they do.
Kristi?
Yes. So, this is a basic, excuse me, pitch. There are so many things here that we would love to do. And why can't we do them? Because we don't have revenue. And when we get to what we're going to talk about next, that should be a consideration. These are things that we need to do for our citizens and we need to have the money to do it. And we've got to put little around.
Okay. So, the other thing is, have we looked at pickleball at all? Which, everybody brings their own equipment and it's just a, you know, it's not, there's not a lot to do in.
Lot of sand.
Yeah, lot of sand, that's it.
Sandboxes.
No?
We've heard mention of it, but that's not one of the top issues that residents, pickleball and tennis have really been the biggest ones.
Okay. And then in terms of whatever we do with the skate parks, wherever they are, Fritz-Burns or La Quinta, I think we heard tonight, and I think we said that we're going to form a committee and we're going to talk to those parents and really find out what's needed and what we need to do before we make any decisions.
We didn't really say we were going to establish a committee. We had volunteers in the committee and obviously staff will do what they need to do to gather input.
We need to hear from the community on this one. Might just feel that we do. In terms of the piece of land that we own on Blackhawk Way and Doom Palm, does that always have to remain housing? Can we do anything to not make that a housing piece?
Basically, under the provisions of the law, since we bought that money with low and moderate income housing revenue, we need to either reimburse the housing authority for that investment now or build housing on it. That property was purchased for $7.31 a square foot.
Which would make the price more.
So, we were looking at, I think it was about $300,000 of investment to reimburse the housing fund if we were to take an acre of that property, if that would be big enough to use for a non-housing purpose. And in, just to clarify a point, we can use, we can, we can use Quimby funds to acquire property for recreation and park services. So, for example, one of the aspect here is, when I mentioned that we had that $3.16 million sitting there for a regional park, if we elected not to go in that direction, there would be more than ample funds to use just that segment of the Quimby funds to do a new, larger skate park with land acquisition and all the rest.
Great.
If I remember correctly, it's about a million dollars to do a decent skate park in terms of the construction costs?
Yes, I do have a rendition of the one before you. That's the 20,000 square foot facility. That would be a million dollars, and that's the high end from what, and this is also just a starting point. This company likes to work with local skaters, get them all involved, and adjust the design accordingly to accommodate what the skaters want.
Yeah, add a scooter section for the kids on scooter.
That can be added as well.
So we could be into this for a million and a half, 1.7 million dollars. We have the capability and capacity to do that financially. Where we get into the challenge, because it goes into the next column, is the operational oversight. And if I remember staff, you contacted Palm Springs and came up with some numbers there.
That's correct. Both Palm Springs and Palm Desert has it manned. And in both cases, they spend about $100,000 annually for the staff, or they contract it in both cases for that management. And if you were to do a skate park like that and you wanted it manned, you would probably have to have a small building. So we're talking about a little bit more, more money for the building and restrooms and, because that's the kind of thing you do when you build that type of facility and you man it. So, you know, if that's the way we would want to go with that, maybe staff can prepare, put a little more detail together for you about what something like that with amenities and staff and management would look like. So we really know what we're talking about in a complete package. And maybe something like that becomes the city's skate park. I mean, if you wanted to go that direction, we could do a lot more homework for you so you could know exactly what that would cost us, where the money would come from, and the details as Frank is outlining.
Doing that as well, could you find out what they charge?
Sure. Yes. And we can, we know in both cases, there is a subsidy. It's, I believe it was close to, they collected about 30% of what they did. So we would, you know, we'd be spending about $70,000 if we had that, those same numbers and had those same fees. But we can look at some of those details, too. And so we could prepare that if you wanted us to look in that direction.
Kristi?
Yeah. I just have one comment, a couple more things, and then I'll give up the floor. So I don't know anything about skate parks at all. So my question here is, do little people skate in the same skate park as 15, 16, 17-year-olds? And they all get along fine? And we don't have to have a little person skate park and a big person skate the dog park? Okay. Well, yeah.
It's pretty cool to watch them. My grandson, he's a little guy. The big kids will let him do his thing and then they'll do theirs. They take turns. It's amazing to watch.
And they help each other.
In terms of the traffic signal at Jefferson and Dunbar, that's a, that's a priority for me with, with the housing that's going in and Chandi's done and it's going to do there. It's, that's just a dangerous left turn out of there to get on the freeway for the folks that live there. I just put a hold on the Fritz-Burns pool. I'd like for it to be used more, but I don't have any fresh ideas with respect to that. And I think there are some other things that are, that I would probably prioritize as more important than that right now. That's it. John?
Yeah, we can get back to that. Skate park. Skate park and starting with Fritz-Burns on the, not the skate park, the, the more information needed. Starting off with Fritz-Burns, I agree. I think Fritz-Burns needs to be repurposed. It's kind of outlived its usefulness in that areas. I think we would go with more. Pickleball and tennis courts, I think they'd get a lot more use. Take the skate park out of it, put that money into a larger skate park, make that just a nicer skate park. Kids will find a way there. I'm not worried about that. So, you know, adding the water slide and all that stuff, and I don't know what we're going to do with the pool. The pool's always been a problem. It was a problem when we built it. So, we didn't know how big to build it. It was going to be this big or that big. It was always going to be, it's always lost money. Pools, the public pools always lose money. I agree with the skate park. I think we ought to do a nice one for what we can afford. If we can repurpose Quimby funds, that would be great. And, you know, come up with some things on what we can do there. I agree with the traffic signal. It's kind of a mess down there, so they'll kind of move forward in that way. If we can work with some of these other communities, that would be great as well, too. But at least we take the lead on that.
All right. So I'm a proponent of the pool concept, but given that we've progressed discussions, I also support losing the Fritz-Burns skate park, making that tennis and pickleball, but doing an investment. And if we're going to look at the housing land as a potential location for a skate park, why don't we make it the skate park and aquatic center? And if we want to do something that's comparable to what Palm Desert has, put it, put it all the edies crawling.
Well, now, now you're talking millions. Just to give you a perspective, the Palm Desert Aquatic Center costs them $11 million and they have a very heavy subsidy on that facility. So, and that's a very different conversation that we don't have the funds for.
Okay. So it's brushed into...
I don't think people understand how much we...
We get to activities in the other areas of the city because we are one big city.
Yes, we are.
All right. Then I'm going to go back to the Fritz-Burns pool and say, what can we do to enhance that and repurpose it so it's not a problem? And maybe adding those fundamental features and using those Quimby funds, knowing that we could still accomplish a larger skate park up there. And again, it's about repurposing, what would we do with the existing skate park at La Quinta Park? Do we expand that with basketball? What is the other demand there? I don't know. If we move to the Doom Palm, Westward Ho area, definitely support a cool concept. And I don't know why we wouldn't do it like the Wellness Center, where we do charge some type of membership that helps offset some of those subsidies.
More people who care to residents and more for...
We wouldn't have a problem with that.
Right. There isn't going to be the big park land down in southeast. I think that that's where, we save that for potential industrial, who knows, as thermal and BMW, all that stuff translates down there. We have some other options that we can consider down the road that may not cost us and people will be coming to us with ideas. But I definitely say I'm willing to discuss things with Indio on some funding mechanism to get this traffic signal done. Edie, you want to share more?
I was just going to suggest, too, if you want us to look at what we could do to build a city skate park, a much better city skate park, and we look at the parcel over there on Doom Palms, let us also take a look at how we might repurpose the existing skate park.
Please.
Because we don't need the smaller one, we don't need to invest in that.
Right.
I could tell you, we could use more basketball over there. And do another basketball court there because we don't have very many of those. So let us put a couple of things together for you using Quimby funds from what we heard tonight. And so that we can bring that back to you.
If I may say, the location that we are discussing for the skate park is great. And we need the extra space for parking because parents are going to drive their kids and they're going to park. And you have the high school across the street, and then you have otherwise street parking or you have to park at the park. And that becomes an issue. So what we want to make sure is that that piece of land is big enough to do both, actually, to have good amount of parking and the facility. And I really think it has to be a good enough facility that they can have events there. Because, you know, a lot of this has to do with events, a little competition, you know, things like that.
It does. It will. And it'll have those competitions, yeah, if it's what it could be.
Well, then, I guess going back to the pool concept and what we can do with Fritz-Burns. I like adding some type of entertainment factor. You look at the small component they put at the Omni at Rancho Las Palmas, and it is amazingly busy all the time in a very small fenced-in area. And if we can enhance something to that, if we're not going to have a hotel that's going to have that feature, that's going to draw the families during the summer months when we're lowest occupancy, we've, we've got to be able to do something else.
Well, and so you proved that landmark, I just never built it.
I remember.
Just...
One of the complaints, if I may, that I hear about the pool is that it is not open long enough during the year. And some said if the pool would be heated, it would be great, right? And of course, you know, it could be, comes with all another set of problems. But I have to say that I was down in San Diego this past week and right in front of City Hall, they have a water feature. And this, this much water at the highest point, and with this water, fountains, right? And kids, kids love it. And really, you know, there's no way they, they're going to drown in that much water. But there's so many kids and I think we should look something...
Well, just the fountain feature at the La Quinta park right now is so busy.
It is.
So we need water and sun water things. With conservation mechanisms.
Doesn't have to be slides.
It's true. Our experience is that, too. The square box is just a data...
Is there a possibility to partner with the hotels during the shoulder season, offseason, to use some of their tennis facilities?
We can certainly ask.
Have we asked that before?
They didn't want to give them up for pools.
I just know, we, we, we can, we can certainly ask and see. We haven't found that to be the case even in working with them on programs and joint things. They don't do that many things for the general public. They keep that pretty tight.
And I understand that, I mean, they don't want people to be on trips and all of those things.
Yeah, and those are scheduled.
And their test scores.
About high school?
Uh huh.
Well, that's another opportunity, too. The thinking was that those are public facilities and they should be unlocked. That's one of the things we could talk to them about at our ESUSD meetings and see. But again, you know, they're...
We can use the middle school, but why can't we use the test scores at high school?
I think that's...
We'll bring that up in our next Two by Two meeting.
I think we should talk about that one, see if that isn't something they could make available to us. We're also going to be renegotiating our agreement with the high school because we use the high school for classrooms and they use our golf course for their junior golf. So we, we need to be able to get access to those public facilities.
Absolutely.
Okay. Talk this one down. Tim?
Well, just to bring things to a close here.
Yeah.
The, we, we, we mentioned already, we have two more slides. Focus change study, obviously, that's, that's undergoing. We're also looking at the circulation around the village as we look at the master plan and the other things that we have going on down in the village area, just so you're aware of that. And then we think, this slide I just added today, based on what the news last week with the, you know, the 25% mandate and reduction in potable water use, we think that these projects are, especially the first two are kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, in terms of reducing our, our water usage. Madison Street median, as far as I know, is the only median that we have, certainly in the public right of way, that is, still has turf in it. And it's, 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 it's a problem to maintain and...
We water the street a lot there.
Yeah. The question, yes, we do, because of the way that it's mounded over the years. The, the question is, do we want, we, we had identified a couple of years ago, the 1.8 million dollar La Quinta Lush retrofit that will give you a, a median that looks similar to what we have on Fred Waring and Jefferson. If we want to do something more like what we're, like what we just, what we're going to see on Avenue 52, it's roughly half that amount. So we were looking for input there. I know it's kind of hard to say because we haven't seen what it looks like yet, but that's maybe something to, to keep in the back of your minds. We also have a project to basically retrofit, and this, this was from a couple of years ago also, the Civic Center campus, some more, take out some more of the turf and replace it with a...
It's like five years ago.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a few years.
It's been since Stan.
Of, of course, North La Quinta Parkway landscape is a big, a big job, almost 600,000 square feet of turf up there. And as Councilmember Roddy mentioned, we're, we're looking to do the projects on 52 as a pilot program and then we'll return on that bigger one. But, so we're looking for direction on the first two, whether or not you want to see that in, in next year's CIP or, or not, or... I think we need to add it from a water conservation standpoint and further explore once we get the 52 done, what that looks like.
How about dormant grass and paint?
Well, you know, the campus, like, there's just, there's these little pockets that aren't reversible that really could be non-turf. I mean, as opposed to just going in 10 feet in the perimeter, there are a lot of little edgeways that just don't need to be grassed. So I think that's definitely doable.
John, the greenskeeper at the Norman course could help you with the spray paint.
I'm sure. How are those things?
Yes. Yes.
Look at all of the first two, okay. And so, that pretty much concludes our presentation. If you don't mind us getting your score sheets, that would help us out considerably. Don't have to do it tonight, but you know, the next couple where they hit, that'd be great. Or if you got it filled out already, fantastic. So, with that, we'll.
Peter? Do you mind, Deb?
We'll take a look at this, at your input, and either return with a study session, or if there seems to be clear direction, maybe we will proceed straight to the public hearing. So, we will be back to you on that.
We'll have to move some of those up, since the Monroe piece was pulled for a separate business item, so you can just re-ring it. I think it was on my list, anyway. All right. We do have another study session planned, ladies and gentlemen, and that will be discussed, establishing an advisory committee to evaluate the city's financial needs.
This should've been one.
Yes, yes.
Would you have a volunteer in the audience?
As we adjust our tech system here. Basically, as you've stated, this is to discuss and evaluate where we go next with committees. And what we laid out is different formation options, from an organic approach where volunteers come forward, community volunteers, and council appointments, support commission nucleus, to council identifies and appoints, or a combination thereof. So, we're here tonight to seek direction on which way you would like to go on that. Second piece deals with committee size. In putting this together, staff has had various experiences with committees and size, and certainly the desire is to have larger committees, because that means there's more people. One of the challenges we run into, particularly if the committee's gonna last over time, is getting a quorum. So, a point of notice there is that the larger the committee, the larger the quorum. Without the quorum, you don't get much done, people get frustrated, and then things fall apart. In terms of responsibilities, this is a general menu of things, in terms of looking at our revenues, where do we get our money from, what do we spend it on, what are our projections? There have been a lot of debate over projections in terms of growth rates and things of that nature, so we'd spend time on that. And then, we've had a lot of questions since we had the conversation last July, August, about, well, why a sales tax measure? It's weird thing, we bring people through the whole litany of things and some of the quirks that have occurred since various constitutional amendments were passed, by what you can or cannot do without voter approval. Finally, in terms of a timeframe, what we're suggesting is that we start the process so we can get a committee formation underway by June of this year. We're looking at our budget in a different manner in terms of making it even more user-friendly. The general direction that has gone out to finance department directors and all those involved in the budget, is that it would be a three-layered system. And we're not changing it totally, so you can't find things, but basically, a overview of what do we spend our money on besides just police fire and Hollywood boards and everybody else? What do we spend on consultants? What do we spend on marketing? What do we spend on pensions? What do we spend on all those things that people ask questions about? Then the next layer, we'll get into talking about departments, and the departments as a whole versus departments with a whole variety of divisions out there. And then the third layer is the one you like to spend a lot of time in, the detail, and what that might be. So, if you wanna venture beyond the first two portals, if you will, and get into the third one and know how everything adds up, that's what we're gonna be looking at. We're going in that direction, because we'd like to then get the committee involved in the discussions along these lines. And the thought here is that this would be a identifiable deliverables that the committee would put together, what they'd be reporting back on, and giving advice to council to you in terms of revenue items. There's a touchy piece here in terms of, I went back and forth with Chris about this, in terms of the post-August activities. August is the deadline, actually, it's earlier than that, July is the deadline to adopt a measure, if you were gonna go forward, or we were gonna go forward with a ballot measure in the November election. And basically, as we discussed before, is that once that goes forward to the ballot, we're in an information mode only. In the past campaigns that I've done, the old redevelopment days, where there were initiatives on redevelopment projects, basically, the council formed the committee, the committee worked through the whole redevelopment proposal when it went to the vote of the people, then the redevelopment committee became the political action committee, you will, or the campaign committee for that measure. And there were people of stature in the community that knew what was going on, and so they could speak to the issue. So, part of this, too, is getting this going so people can start the learning process, because we're gonna be asking them to go from zero to 1,000 in short order, but also so they understand it enough, so they can ask us the questions, we can think of those things and respond back if they have new ideas, and maybe we can do things differently than we are currently going. So, that's it. Short, sweet, and simple, we're here to answer your questions.
So, just to clarify, when you're talking about we have to have it by July, we're talking July of 2016, not this June.
Correct.
Okay. Also, make sure everybody understood that.
Right.
Can I have a mirror?
Yes.
In regards to our review of city finances, you're looking at July to October. Based on this, do you think we'll have some idea of where Sacramento's going at that point in time? Because, I mean, Sacramento's gonna face such a big role in our finances, in a matter of what they take or what they hold back. And hopefully, they don't get legislation like recently discussed regarding changing rules from 20 years ago regarding our loans with the RDA and the general fund. And I'm sure they'll come up with something else, but, I mean, at what point do we say, okay, here's where we are today, given potential legislation in Sacramento? Do you have any idea of when you're gonna be comfortable saying, all right, here's where we are in regards to the state?
Basically, we'll be in a position that, right now, and part of what Bill and I, if you see us looking at things over here, is that there's various legislative proposals coming forth. Certainly, there's the one we talked about before that would change the repayment of, now, 36 million dollars of general fund loans. And Bill will be going up there Thursday to testify on behalf of the city. There is another bill that came out of an assembly person at Huntington Beach that would eliminate our ability to get vacation rental income. Now, there's a competing bill, and Bill is just showing me here, that would not, would compete against that, and if it was adopted, it would add even more provisions of why the cities could collect TOT revenue on vacation rentals and put in fines that would be their state statutes. So, long way of saying is that, unfortunately, Councilmember Osborne, I don't think we'll ever be able to say where they stop, because it'll be very fluid. However, what we would find ourselves in a position, starting that July timeframe, is that, for the most part, unless there's a special session, which there doesn't seem to need to be one, whatever legislation's enacted between now and June 30th, we'll know about. But that doesn't mean that.
Next year.
Next year will be a different story.
Well, I'm in support of establishing an advisory committee and getting the information in progress.
Same here. Yep, not that year. It's the purpose system to do it.
No more than seven people, though.
Yeah, I think seven people, they can manage hot committees, if they want to form a hot committees of two or three people, so that doesn't count towards their quorum.
Right, they get input to the actual size.
Exactly. And, you know, try to be as broad as we can in the community, to all sectors of our community. I think we'll find a lot of people who will be involved in it.
And how do we go about selecting them?
I don't think we select them as a council, I think they have to, people need to say, hey, let's do this, and I don't know if we want to select people.
I think we can't.
We gotta keep it numbers.
Yeah, right. We need to select some, we need some volunteers, we definitely, we need to, just like this quadrant shows, is, we definitely need a combination.
I think this is really like jury duty. I mean, you get a pool of people that wants to participate, you have some conversation with them, you want to see people that come to the table, they're open-minded, they don't come necessarily with their own agenda, they're willing to listen to all the information that will be presented, and make recommendations based on that. So, we also look at people with judgment, and good judgment, that can help us out with this task.
But I think we'll get more people than we expect, and I hate to turn anybody away that would wanna volunteer. And that's the difficult part.
But I think seven's too small. I understand the quorum piece, but that means you're getting input from four people out of 40,000 residents.
Eleven.
Well, maybe we, maybe we just see what happens and then.
Right, maybe we'll look at the interest law and decide.
Sounds nice to me. I'm all for it.
Yeah, hold up on the numbers till we see how many people volunteer.
Volunteer.
So, then what we'll do is we'll come back with a business item that gets this going. One of the, the two things that I would suggest as this moves forward, is you need to give them a specific assignment, so this doesn't become an expedition wandering all over the universe, and specific target dates of deliverables. There has to be structure, because, again, they're working through the council to give you advice and counsel. And so, you need to outline that, because while we'd like it to be open for all to provide input, as I'm learning through discussions I'm having, people are saying, ask us what we want them to do, and what timeframe we want them to do it in. So, we should need to do that. Thank you.
Are you considering hiring professionals as well?
I would say that that would come later, because it's that point of, you can hire a professional to do surveying, but you cannot hire a professional to then deal with the campaign.
Again, I'm thinking Measure J with Palm Springs, they had a professional group in there and it worked out very well for them.
That was handled by the campaign committee, not by the city of Palm Springs.
Right.
There's a big firewall there that is established.
Sure, okay. Okay. Do you want to move forward, business item?
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and informational items. I would say brevity is key. My SEVAG meeting's meet on Thursday. I think that Wonder will or has distributed a copy of the annual report from CDB, family report, so, other than that, the executive committee is later as well, so. I will report just one, on one item that I did, is the Coachella Valley Water District Policy Committee, and they meet once a year. And they've been meeting the last five years to raise the amount of certain purchase price of water by $7 a year, your five-year term. That ends in a couple of years, and then our water rates are gonna go absorbing it. So, we'll get there in a couple of years, but other than that.
You've got a lot on the plate there.
That's, yeah. Kristy?
I left my notes at home, the only thing I had was sunlight, but there was nothing worth shattering, and I'll get it to you next meeting.
Perfect. Robert?
Very quickly, then, SEVAG, yesterday we had the transportation committee meeting. The Adam Bridge, $400,000 was approved in a second.
Yes.
It was great. It wasn't a little bit convoluted, was the CV link?
That Doom Palm Bridge. Should've been Doom Palm.
No, this is for the Adams. So, this, the $400,000.
Oh, the reimbursement, sorry. Apologies, yes.
We didn't get that one yet. But we're ready, we're ready for that. So, the entire issue with CV link has been continued to main. There were two items on the agenda. One was the approval of the specification, the master plan, and the other one was the approval of an agreement to fund operational maintenance. And that's where, basically, I'm sure all of you are seeing, where Rancho Mirage maybe jumped the gun or preempted, two preempted measures, and said, no, we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna do it under that formula. And the formula, more or less, was a percentage of the potential increase in TOT. So, if they were going to use the baseline of 2016 and ask 2017, all the participating cities will have to put in 8% of what they consider an increment, which is a little bit convoluted. And this may never come in front of us. At this point, they may come back with a totally different proposal by next month. But there were questions, I was ready, actually, to ask a lot of questions, particular, are you talking about gross TOT? Are you talking about collected TOT versus generated TOT? Are you talking, and why, if CV link is not going to be operational until 2019, how do we really see the benefit to the hospitality industry in 2017? Right? So, it's a little bit of an issue, but we'll have more next month. At this point, we may come back with another, they may come back with another proposal, or they may wait for some time to see where everybody stands. SEVAG, well, three of us were here for the last meeting, where we had it here in our beautiful courtyard, it was a great meeting. Very quickly, here, what, the reason I raised the questions, and the reason I talk about what's going on with SEVAG, and I like to keep myself informed with the city manager and with Chris, is to understand where we are with SEVAG. Really, we need to find what the critical issue is and how we can help. It's not to punish the people that are trying to fix the problem at all. Joe Wallace is in with his heart and is trying to do his best. However, there are some issues. When I see on the agenda that the city of La Quinta committed $50,000, which, when we really didn't, really discussed it yet, and we have to discuss at some point, you know, sooner than late, maybe in the next couple of months, it's a little concerning, because after that, they say, well, we are not really looking at fine the sky, we are looking at solid numbers. And they're like, well, we didn't have this discussion as a council, and it's a little bit jump of the gun, to see what we can contribute and how we can contribute for next year. The $40,000 investment, and I know I probably have beaten that to you. Again, I asked a question, what happened to that investment? And I've been told, well, there are three reports that were generated. And so, I got access to the report, I believe that all of you did.
Yes.
And that's not what was discussed here. When Mr. Flevin and Wes were here and presented, I don't see the connection. My understanding was totally different. So, I'm not sure, Frank, how we can clarify what we invested and what we are getting. I'm not really sure how to.
The fourth left, the GIS report is yet to come.
That's all it said, the fourth report.
That's gonna be pretty big to pick 40,000.
But it says that these three reports are part of it, and I'm like, okay, this is really valley-wide and it's a little bit fine the sky, but I'm trying to understand where are they with the, and again, these are the people that are trying to fix it. Okay? Another thing that I think is worth, well, you discussed already, AB 1220, we know that's coming, I would like to express my disappointment that that bill was put forward by former mayor.
Yeah.
I don't understand, when people get elected with assembly, if something goes off, a switch goes off, and they forget where they came from.
I like the governor.
Same thing. Exactly the same thing. Anyway, so I think that's about it. One of the things that was, I would like to make a comment, Gary Hunt made a comment about perhaps having packages, where you buy $25,000, this is the service you get, buy $50,000 services you get, and that is working through the rule and regulations for the, the bylaws and all that. I thought that was, actually, that would be very helpful, so the city, we can have a discussion, we can really understand how much we are buying, so. And if you have any other comments, you two were there.
I think at some point, if we're gonna get involved, we may need to get involved at the executive level.
I'm impressed.
We can take what, the assets of the list of implementation for the East Valley, to take that, to see that, so we have something concrete that everybody can measure by, because we've never had that before. I think our staff did a great job, but now to get the East Valley, and to be able to implement that and to see that level, I think would be crucial.
Thank you, Osborne.
That's it, thank you.
John? Lee?
I had the IID and ECA C board meeting last night. There's quite a few solar projects coming online, all of which, no, I should say, most of which are going to San Diego Gas Electric or Pacific Castle up in LA area. So, mostly energy is being bought, but these groups are paying for the infrastructure and then getting rebates based on transmission credits. But there's quite a bit in solar projects going online down there in Pearl Valley. On the. The, on another item, we had our subcommittee meeting, our economic development subcommittee meeting, and we looked at the reports that we received from C-VAP, which really didn't have any benefit to East Valley that was discussed whatsoever, so that's, that's a real challenge. So I'm hoping this GIS study's going to be amazing.
I like optimism.
But one thing that did come out of, a couple of things came out of that meeting, we are looking at the ICSC meeting commission in San Diego. So we'll have talk to specific people to make specific appointments, and go with the local realtors to talk to these folks about La Quinta. So it's not just go to wander the show, but to have specific meetings on specific items, and that's what we're looking to do in September for the IC. The second thing, though, that Councilwoman Franklin brought up, great issue, is regarding commercial and industrial zoning. We don't have any. None. And she talked of maybe we need to look at that regarding our annexation area. And I talked with another gentleman the other day about this idea, and he has done studies in the past regarding commercial industrial zoning in the valley, and what's being used or overused, do we have enough or not enough? And I, I think it's a great idea if we were to take a look at commercial industrial zoning for La Quinta, what would be needed, where should it be, and if we need to move forward with that? And, and what do those folks look for? You know, I was in LA last weekend up in Brea, and you look at these huge industrial buildings, commercial buildings as part of it. And I mean, we're not going to get a Sony or a Honda, but there's still some big groups out there, I think, that could benefit. But I'd like to talk to them to see what they want, what are they looking for in these types of facilities? So I think that was a, a great idea, and it's something that we may want to look at in the future, to get a study done on commercial industrial zoning in this part of the valley, and should La Quinta get more aggressive in that area? Great idea.
That one, Departmental reports, city manager.
I'll defer to the city clerk on this one.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, we recommend that we cancel the council meeting of April 21st. We have-
You could've done today instead. Exactly, 21st.
Oh, yeah, sorry. But they'll need it by April 21st. Anyway, we have some routine, of course, routine reports from, from clerk and, and finance and, and some others, but nothing that is absolutely pressing that it cannot wait until Cinco de Mayo, May 5th.
Are you disappointed?
Because Tim had two items he wanted on the agenda, but I thought if it would be a half hour, it'd be a little bit too short.
Just very disappointed. I, I'm, I'm fine if there's not anything pressing that we need to be productive in our time element, and I'm happy to postpone anything that we need to until May.
Okay, since we do, you know, we can put out the cancellation a day before, we'll do it three days before, we'll wait until then, see if anything comes up, just in case. The city ma, the city manager, I think, will be out of town. So we'll look to the deputy.
We do have a mayor's walk on the 25th before the birthday party, so if we get anything pressing, and there's a quorum. We'll take care of demand registers.
Just since you're bringing up the point, yeah, it looks coincidental, but the point was, is that as we sat through the executive team, other than minutes, demand register, we had two items that would be on that agenda. So then I said, do we want to bring you all in for a half-hour meeting?
No.
Didn't make sense.
Sure, but keep it posted, we'll support that. Anything else from the departments? Mayor and council member items?
No. You brought this up before, and so I'll just read it.
Desert Classic Charities.
It's interesting to see, we each had three or four different places, it was interesting to see how their folks in the valley-
Percy.
Yeah, Percy. But also, one thing that I learned is that we think our valley's a climate this big, it's not really this small, and there's so much collaboration that we actually really don't know about, between charitable organizations and philanthropists and just regular folks helping out, so it's always heartwarming that we can give, you know, some money to that. So far, we don't have a sponsor for the tournament this next year, but we will have a tournament sponsor.
Yes.
So they have a tournament sponsor, not a major sponsor?
No.
No, they have funding to, there will be a tournament, we're going to be hearing, we'll be hearing in the not-too-distant future, is my understanding, so.
Because they're going to have a sponsor?
Yes, they're having the tournament, and we'll be hearing soon.
Hopefully.
Yes, courses and sponsors.
But worst-case scenario, they'll still have the tournament whether they have it, not even a sponsor.
Actually, very excited, the prospects of just creating and repurposing and doing interesting things with golf. Okay? Anything else? John?
Skate park, obviously, was a huge issue tonight. Thanks for the police department hanging in there, and, you know, they got kind of beat up tonight. I don't think it's necessarily their fault, I think it's a, a small group of kids. I'd like to see a report back from, you know, we got something today from the chief that came in, but maybe from our staff of what else, what they see going on there, what vandalism problems have been there, so we can communicate with some of these parents that think that we're the bad guys, or the cops are the bad guys, and they're not. It, it's just a small group of kids. Because that's what's going to be in the paper tomorrow. That's going to be headlining the paper, is, you know, cops out of control at the Quinta Park.
Well, and I, as I talked to Lieutenant Walton during our break, I, he was readily available, and I was prepared to guffaw him up, but I did not want to get into a, a battle over enforcement techniques, and wanted to just diffuse.
And this was done at, at, you know, a public comment, which, you know, we don't ordinarily respond, but, you know, I was ready to kind of fire off on this one, too, but I just didn't want to.
Right, we, right.
We rang it.
We rang it. I know, I think we all were, so, tried to, yeah. A couple of things, I know, I think three of us are going to be helping Man the Phones, Find Food Bank's telethon this Friday evening, and I know we've always been a supporter of Find, and recognizing they provide meals for 90,000 people every month, and serve many agencies, part of that collaboration. Frank and I had an opportunity to visit La Quinta Country Club, I think that was after our last council meeting, right, the day after, and provide an update on the city, as well as an update on Silver Rock. Very engaged, probably 100 homeowners, 80 to 100 homeowners. And we've since been asked to a couple other locations as a result, so Les and I are going back out, I think, to the Palm Springs Realty Group or Developer Group in another week or two. So we're, we're somewhat taking the show on the road, and was even asked after the DCC Desert Classic Charities meeting yesterday, talked to Bob Marra a little bit, and when they come about having some information to share, he wants to be part of our circuit of sharing that news as we're going to communities, talking about the positive momentum that's happening in La Quinta.
Do you need another council, any of these bits, let me know.
Okay. Excellent, excellent. Just the word on CBB, just at least from hoteliers, with the festivals coming up, everything's been really busy, which is great. And of course, our high school symphony, wind symphony, did successfully perform in Carnegie Hall and are back safe, and so I think that, again, is another wonderful community support component that brings people together, families together, so. Birthday party, if we're not having our meeting on the 21st, our birthday party is happening on the 25th, here at Civic Center Park. We'll probably start the mayor's walk at the McDonald Center, take a tour around the area, probably stop by Old Town Coffee, and then end in the park, so we'll be kicking off the birthday party as well, so we'll make use of that. And with that, we have no public hearings. I will call for a adjournment.
So who?
There's a motion to second to adjourn, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Robert has to say.
Good night, everybody, and thank you.